invent themselves, the services that they offer, and the opportunities that they can create within their centers to meet the needs of this emerging population. So, part of what we do through the Director's Knowledge Fair is we bring state-of-the-art experts in an array of fields, so that they can learn from them firsthand. They don't have to wait for the book or for the article to come out. They get to talk to them here. In Los Angeles, we're very fortunate in that we have some of the foremost experts in the nation.
Yes.
So, we draw from them to make up our programs. And, we believe that that's really having a positive impact on the services that are being delivered at our local centers.
Well, I thought it's so amazing. I didn't understand this, and I was, you know, born in L.A. The cooperation between our, among our major universities with their geriatric studies and Dr. Panos with the fall protection, and learning how all of these things need to be shared and then disseminated into the community. And, yes, Cynthia.
Well, you're exactly right. We do have a rich partnership with our local universities in research areas. They have provided us information on the fall prevention program, on just overall statistics. And, they also assist us with bringing in the young individuals who want to get into geriatrics. And, so, many of the local universities provide us with interns that help us with programs to do the innovation that we hope to do.
Right, I've met some of them, and they're doing their research, but it's hands-on research. And, of course, the special feature of Los Angeles is the diversity of our cultures. How many languages are we working with here, with all of these directors?
We speak with an array of languages. Los Angeles, over 150 languages spoken in our region. That's one of the challenges to our centers. You can never really hire enough staff to speak to the communities that you serve. So, volunteerism, we want to encourage the viewing public. When they have an opportunity to volunteer, especially if they speak another language, they could really be a lifeline for members of the community in need. And, they're always welcome to volunteer at our centers or any of the other public agencies that work in the community to serve the diversity and richness of Los Angeles.
And, it is enriching for the senior who volunteers, because they find new enthusiasms and new contacts. And, that's just one of the great features of volunteering in the whole world of senior activities. Thank you very much. Now, we'll be right back with more from the Director's Knowledge Fair. Please stay tuned to Aging Well in L.A.
Hello, I'm Dr. Scott Kaiser, board-certified family physician and geriatric medicine specialist, and welcome to The Empowered Patient. I'm joined by a very special guest today, Jerry Phillips, who's going to talk to us about taking charge of our health, how he's found little tricks of the trade and ways to get more out of his healthcare. How you doing, Jerry?
Glad to meet you, doctor, and thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming. So, Jerry, you told me you were going to a lot of different doctors.
Before I found a doctor, I had many doctors. Rheumatologist, a cardiologist, a dermatologist, a dentist, an eye doctor. And, sometime they're prescribing things.
Seems you have a doctor for each different body part.
That's true. And, today, you need that. But, you need a general, like General Eisenhower, to coordinate all of the doctors, so you don't have one doctor giving one advice, another doctor giving another advice. The primary physician, in my case, made the decision with me. I don't believe a doctor should be paternalistic. He should be working as a team, where I have something to say about my own life and health.
So, do you have a main doctor in charge who helps sort all these things out, keep everything in line?
Correct. He helps me to make the decision.
So, Jerry, so, having this main doctor allows you to, you form a partnership with this primary doctor, allows you to make better decisions, work as a partnership, work as a team?
Absolutely. And, even today. I mean, before I had the primary physician, I had many doctors. But, I still have many doctors. But, if I am confused with anybody, what they're saying, what they recommend, I talk to the primary physician at all times.
So, in sorting through this, you found that it was important to have a second opinion? And, with this, you, these are complicated decisions, particularly around whether or not you're going to have a surgery. So, you're sorting through this with your primary care doctor and using them as a resource?
One doctor suggested I had a hernia. He didn't suggest an operation, although I complained about a hernia problem. He said, "It doesn't hurt you that much, leave it alone." I went to the primary physician. He said, "I don't like that advice. I think you should take care of it while your health is good." And, I went to the surgeon, and he said, "No, let's take care of it now, you're in good health." I did, and it's wonderful.
So, good. And, Jerry, we were talking about this booklet here that I suggested you read, this Talking With Your Doctor, available from the National Institute on Aging, available online or by calling in, free to anyone. Do you have any thoughts on this booklet? Anything you found particularly helpful? Things that our audience might want to know more about?
There's one thing that they didn't stress enough, I think, but it was an excellent work. And, that is, on two occasions, when I went to be operated on, and the doctor asked my advice on something, the surgeon, and I didn't think that I was able to handle that question. And, I said, "Talk to my people outside, let them make the decision." Another time, my son was in an operation.
So, wait, hold on, let me understand that. So, there was a, there was a point where you weren't able to make a decision on your own?
I didn't think I would, could be, I could make the decision.
Because you were under sedation?
I was under sedation.
So, you had assigned a family member? You assigned your son to make the decision in your place?
Not only my son, my son, my daughter, and my wife.
Well, Jerry, thank you so much for...
God bless you, doctor, and good luck to you. You're doing wonderful work on this.
Thanks so much.
I'm taking charge of my health. I'm empowering patients.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Got something very interesting for you veterans out there and surviving spouses. I'm with Kathleen O'Sullivan and Bonnie Lederman. Did I get it right?
You did.
I did. This is a fascinating topic, the benefits that may be available to senior veterans. Bonnie, explain how you got this started.
Paul, in 2003, I started Veterans Home Care because my mom, Edie Spurling, passed away previously from breast cancer. It was consuming my trips back and forth. They were countless, from St. Louis to California. My mom needed home care, but her income was extremely low. I had nobody to help us. And, I, when I did my research in the later months of her illness, I found that the Veterans Administration has a pension. It's called Aid and Attendance. And, it's specifically used for home care.
I see.
And, the benefit is strictly for veterans of wartime and surviving spouses.
I see.
The uniqueness of this is that my company, Veterans Home Care, helps veterans and surviving spouses get home care through this pension from the Veterans Administration. It has three requirements. Basically, it's for veterans and surviving spouses of the wartime eras. And, they are World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam.
And Vietnam, right.
The three requirements, of course, the person had to serve at least 90 days, with one day during wartime of active duty. They need to have an honorable discharge. They also have to have a serious medical condition, which keeps them approximately 60% housebound.
I understand, okay.
And, not driving.
Well, and, non-medical home care, or even medical home care, is a much more efficient way to deliver services to people besides that they're home and in familiar surroundings. Kathleen, is this a big population? I mean, you're not going to shock me if you tell me it's tens of thousands of people.
Oh, it's thousands of people. Forty-five percent of our seniors here are veterans.
Wow, now, that's not surprising. Everybody was involved, especially World War II. And, those are, that's really got to be the bubble of the population. So, how does a person access these programs? Do they, they call to buy your company, or is there an 800 number?
It's 877-878-4248.
Okay, and we'll have that on the screen. Get your pencil and paper out. So, say it again, please, 87...
877-878-4248.
Okay, and is there a website as well?
Yes.
And that is?
Our website is www...I left a W.
That's right, we know that. VeteransHomeCare.com. All right, now, once you became energized on this subject, were you surprised when you saw how many people needed this service?
I knew it in my heart. When my mom was ill, I called my husband. I said, "We're starting a new business, because there have to be thousands of people that are going through exactly what I went through in taking care of my parents." And, the pension is difficult to get, because you have to spend more than your income on medical expenses in order to receive this.
I understand, but that's not so hard to do with the costs of prescriptions and all the rest. Some of us are really being hammered.
The only qualifying expense that you can use is home care.
I see.
And, most people can't afford to pay for home care and the rent. So, that's what's unique about Veterans Home Care. We front the money for the veteran and surviving spouse. And, when they get the money from the pension, they reimburse us for the services that we've given them.
I see, well, that's wonderful. So often, the upfront costs of getting into a program are so intimidating, people say, "Oh, I just, I don't have the resources to do this."
And, they throw their hands up.
Yeah. Now, Kathleen, talk to me about planning ahead. What if you're like the son or daughter of a veteran who may be in this position? Can you kind of plan ahead to get these services in place before the need arises?
Yes, that's a great idea to do that. You know, there's a lot of paperwork to compile together.
I'm sure.
That, you know, they need to do that. So, preparing for that is the best way, because we, you know, I prequalify them.
And then, what, I didn't miss that?
The papers that they need are going to be the discharge paper, which should be honorable, the marriage license, the death certificate of the spouse. And, they need bank statements and a social security award.
You got to prove all of this stuff. Well, I hope this has been of value to you veterans out there who may be in this very unique position. Well, not so unique. Probably a lot of people out there are in this position. Help is available. We'll be putting back the telephone number and the website for you. So, please, access this program. There's help available. We'll be right back.
We're here to scientifically prove the end result of riding a bicycle against traffic. The average car weighs 6,000 pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs 170 pounds, give or take a few. A typical car traveling 35 miles per hour has 220 times the momentum or energy of a bike rider traveling 10 miles per hour. And, if the two collide, bug splatter. Avoid being bug splatter. Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Yo, check this out, I'm at the light, right? Dude was trying to fill me out, so I blew right past him. Ha ha, yeah, I won. But, I wasn't the real winner, because he's alive and I'm dead.
What about my family? I wasn't even part of your street race. Now, I'm dead.
And, don't even think, man, that'll never happen to me, dog, because that's what I thought. And, now, I didn't even get a chance to say goodbye.
Listen, life is important. Drive responsibly. Learn more at WatchTheRoll.org.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Now, anybody in this city knows that we have a great park system. And, I want to introduce you to Anthony Montanez, who is with our city park system. And, welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Our parks play an amazing key role in the lives of seniors, because they can access those facilities. What were some of the special things you learned today about the role that the parks play in lives of seniors?
Well, what I learned through the speaker that spoke earlier was how we can attract the baby boomers. There's a lot of people out there that don't realize that they are seniors.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
And, making our senior centers more attracted, attractive to them.
Sure. Now, what was the discussion? It was like games or outings?
More outings, camping, skiing, going out, jogging, mountain biking, just fun things to do.
Yes.
Not just sitting there and playing bingo. And, other, you know, table games are great.
Sure.
Some people want to get out and enjoy the outdoors.
Well, I think so. And, the boomers are a lot more active. They like golf outings and going up the mountains, which are nearby, that's for sure. So, is this something that you will pass on to activities directors at the various facilities?
Yes, a lot of our directors are in the Knowledge Fair, they're attending.
Yes.
And, hopefully, they'll take that back, and we'll discuss it and how we can get some additional funding to do a lot of this.
Right, well, additional funding, that's going to be a challenge in these times, that's for sure. But, have the, have the parks, have they been able to maintain at least a level of service that is sufficient?
I think we have. We haven't really had any major cutbacks. We have had some cutbacks, but I think we're going to be okay. We've got a good group of people out there working hard. We have a great volunteer corps, which really steps up during these times.
Well, I think it's great that when people, once they can get themselves there the first time, they sort of fall into the lifestyle, don't they?
Oh, yes, they do.
And, then, they bring their best ideas, which I like to see. Now, are the nutrition programs delivered at parks, are they still going on?
Yes, they are. We have several different nutrition programs that come to our parks.
Right, I know, I've always been encouraged to see how often our seniors are really getting a good meal and some guidance for nutrition at home.
Yeah, that's, that's a great thing about this. They, you know, the meals, I know they're not, they're filled with a lot of spices and salts and stuff, but they're healthy meals. And, you know, they also get the information they need to take this, take it home and make better meals at home.
Right, I think so. And, the best part, though, is the socialization. Seniors getting together with their common interests, even if it's pulling out your wallet and saying, "Well, I've got a new grandkid."
Yeah, oh, yeah, show their pictures.
Are the leagues still going on? The bowling leagues and the pool leagues and things like that?
We do have aqua aerobics.
Uh huh, great.
Water fitness programs at some of our facilities. We have lawn bowling at Arcadia Park.
Great.
And, that seems to attract a lot of people, and it's a great sport.
That's good. Seniors got to get out more often. Anthony Montanez, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
And, we'll be right back.
Welcome to Braille Institute, a nonprofit organization that has been designed to work with individuals with fading vision. Please come along with us as we explore our Vista store, a store that has many different items and accessories that can support individuals with fading vision. I'm here with our Vista store coordinator, Jorge Marquez, who will explain some of the wonderful items that we have here available for people with low vision.
Hi. Here are a few devices that we have in our store. We have a 10x magnifier mirror. We also have a low-vision keyboard with large print as well. We have an atomic talking watch, and also with large numbers, so that the person can either look at the numbers or can hear the voice. We have a large print button TV remote control that will make it also easier for the person with fading vision. There is a large print big address book. We also have a giant print address book, which is much larger than the one before, with numbers and names that can be very bold in lines. And, we also have as well, a pocket address book with large words and numbers. We have a pen that is called 2020. This pen will write in bold, and it doesn't leak. It doesn't go through the page. As you can see, one, and you can see the numbers really bold. As you can see, these devices are very useful for individuals with fading vision. Come and see us at any time. We're here for you, and enjoy. Thank you.
As you can see, we have so many opportunities here for people with fading vision. You may know somebody who has fading vision, or you yourself may have vision that's not doing so well. Remember, we are here. Come and see us. We are here to help you. Almost all of our students have some vision. Only 10% of people have no vision at all. You could be one of those, somebody with macular degeneration, glaucoma, diabetic retinopathy, or even cataracts. All of those are the people that are here. People with those diseases are the people that are here at Braille Institute. So, please, come join us. Your life can be very good again.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. We are still here at the Senior Centers Directors Gathering at the Braille Institute with a longtime friend of our show, Larry Lisnby. It's great to see you again, Larry.
Thank you, it's great to be here.
Are you enjoying the conference?
Absolutely. It was incredible this morning.
Yeah, I heard there was a standing ovation.
It was. He was, he had clearly done his homework. He gave us some really good practical suggestions about what we can do going forward to make our senior centers a success and to meet the needs of the boomers and the seniors.
Well, it's especially challenging in this year with, with the downsizing and the budget cuts. How are you doing over there at One Generation? Is it, are the challenges insurmountable?
No, they're surmountable. We think we're going to survive. But, we do, we've lost staff due to layoffs, and those layoffs were a result of cutbacks in government funding and reductions in grants that are available out there.
Yeah, well, and the economy is flat. I don't know what else to call it. And, isn't it remarkable, this happens at exactly the time when the needs are increasing, because there are more and more seniors?
It's as if there were an inverse relationship. Just as our funding goes down, the need for services has gone up.
It's remarkable. I know, I spoke with the seniors group, and we were talking about the greater need for volunteers who can help fill in the gap with their wisdom and their energy.
Yes, and because of cutbacks in staffing, the need for volunteers is going to increase this coming year.
I think so.
Most seniors would not be able to function, in my opinion, without additional volunteers.
It's true. This is a place where we really have to plug the holes. We need to step up and, whether it's meal delivery or food service or transportation, or just someone to help run the dance class, for goodness sake.
Yes, we, we're increasingly relying upon volunteers to conduct our programs, activities, exercises.
Well, of course, a volunteer gets so much more back. I know, I see that across the board. The volunteers are just, they beam with pleasure, knowing they're doing some good for their community.
And, the good news in all this is, as the baby boomers come online, more of them are interested in serving as opposed to being served.
Right.
So, they're looking for meaningful outlets, and they have a lot to contribute.
Well, when you come away from this gathering, will you have some new ideas and some fresh approaches, you think?
Absolutely. I'm excited about getting back to my staff and saying, "Look, these are some of the things we learned about as a way we can attract seniors to our center, make it more attractive, make their experience here more meaningful, more relevant." So, that should be a good outcome.
Well, that's a good reason to have these conferences. Like-minded people sharing their best ideas.
Yes, it is. We do this every six months, and we always go away with things that we can do to make our centers more effective, more attractive, and to benefit the seniors.
Great. Larry, thank you again for being with us today. It's a great pleasure. And, thanks so much for being with us today on Aging Well in L.A.
If coyotes are in your neighborhood, here are some important steps to protect your home. Secure all garbage containers with straps. Spray garbage containers with ammonia to hide the odor of food. Bring garbage containers out the day of pickup. And, never leave garbage containers open. Fences should be six to eight feet in height, extending into the ground three to four feet. The top of a fence should have an angled addition. Randomly blinking lights or water sprinklers activated by sound or movement can deter a coyote. Collect yard fruit as soon as possible. Keep your home garden properly fenced. Remove pet-drinking and eating bowls to the inside of the house. Keep all pets inside the house or in an extremely secure enclosure. When off your property, walk your pet with a leash. And, never allow your pet to roam away from the house by itself. Above all, never feed a coyote. You endanger yourself, your children, and everyone in your community. If you have any questions about coyotes, please, call this number.
I'm Eric Garcetti, and I want to talk to you about a very serious subject, domestic violence. Some people think that violence between family members occurs only among poor or uneducated people. But, nothing could be further from the truth. Women of all cultures, races, and ages are battered by their husbands or boyfriends. If you feel threatened, help is available. Pick up your phone and call the National Domestic Violence Hotline at 800-799-SAFE. Remember, there is no excuse for domestic violence in Los Angeles.
Hi, this is Carateo Family.
We are from Mr. Sagil's Royal Heights.
You're watching Channel 35, our Citywide Channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome members of the public who have joined us here today. Thank you very much for your presence and taking the time to be here for our meeting. And also, I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings on our city's cable system and also rebroadcast them each evening. We're also available in person in San Pedro and Van Nuys, if that's closer to where you live. Want to avoid traffic and save some time, and you can also testify remotely from those facilities. We also are available online, if you're close to a computer, at lacity.org, where we have all of our agendas available. We have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. And for your convenience, we also archive our past council meetings for your reference as well. Finally, if you can't make it here to San Pedro, Van Nuys, aren't close to a computer or television, you can always pick up the telephone and listen into our proceedings. We welcome our listeners through Council Phone, which is a service of the city at (213) 621 CITY. That's (213) 621 CITY, which allows folks to be able to listen in to our full council meetings as well as any of our committee meetings, too. If you wish to be heard today on any of the items that are on today's agenda, please fill out a speaker card here or in Van Nuys in San Pedro, and hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms or city staff. If a hearing has already been held in committee on a given issue, that will stay there in committee unless a council member reopens a public hearing. But for any items that have not yet had a public hearing, a card from the public automatically triggers a public hearing here in council. Finally, we have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment, which is for items not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. There are a couple urgent items today that we'll be taking up first. I think, believe both our health care vote and also vote on the Wilshire bus lanes will probably go to our public comment just following that. But in the meantime, we are awaiting a quorum of the council, and council members Cardinus Corretts, Labonge Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Wesson are here. Ms. Hahn and Mr. Zeiner excused today, but we are waiting the following late council members. Council members Alacon, Wezar, Krikorian, Reyes, and Smith. We need two more members to begin our meeting. If they will please join us as soon as possible so we can begin the meeting. Again, that's council members Alacon, Wezar, Krikorian, Reyes, and Smith, who are now late. Thank you for your patience while we wait those members. If we fail to reach a quorum in the next few minutes, we'll have to cancel for lack of a quorum. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We are now at nine members, awaiting one more member for a quorum. Council members Alacon, Wezar, and Krikorian. Thank you. With Mr. Smith's arrival, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Alacon, Cardinus, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zeiner, Garsetti, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds. No objection. Those are approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Today is Tuesday, and we salute the flag each Tuesday. If I could ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Cardinus, will you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
... Put your hand over your heart. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, in thy name.
Thank you, Mr. Cardinus. Mr. Labonge?
Flag Day, correct?
Yeah.
Today, as you know, and to thank you for your service to the country and the United States of America, but today is Flag Day.
Absolutely.
And to recognize the flag of our country so well.
Thank you. We wish everybody a very happy Flag Day. We've got at least a few up here for everyone's enjoyment. Two American ones, among others. With that, let's go ahead and, if we can, run through today's agenda, please.
Items one through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. Item one is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold number one on the desk. Anybody wishing to call items two through eight special or reopen public hearings on any of those? Two through eight. If nobody wishes to call any of those specials, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items nine through nineteen are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. There are cards on items nine and sixteen.
All right, if there's no objection...
We can call specials.
Okay, we'll call nine special. Mr. Rosendahl on cards, we'll do the same. And sixteen, we'll call special for cards in the public. We'll close the other public hearings. Any other specials, ten through nineteen? Ten through nineteen?
We want to continue. One day.
Sixteen? Okay. There's no objection, we'll continue. Sixteen, one day. That will take us to the fifteenth. Any other specials? If not, let's go ahead and take up the balance then. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items twenty through twenty-five are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration. There is a request to continue item twenty-five one week to June 21st.
Any objection continuing item twenty-five until the 21st? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and continue that. We have cards on item twenty, and we'll call that special as well. And we'll take that together with twenty... Twenty-one and twenty-six. Sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-six we would take together. But does anyone wish to call those special? Yes, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to call it special, and as soon as we have a amended motion coming forward, we like to call it out of order.
Okay, we'll hold twenty-one, twenty-two on the desk as well. We have item twenty...
Twenty-two special.
Twenty-two special for Mr. Rosendahl as well. Are there specials, colleagues? Are there specials on the balance? If not, we have items twenty-three and twenty-four. If we can open the roll on those. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Thirteen.
Surely. A fourth with on item thirteen from Ms. Hahn.
Four and seven.
And four and seven on fourth with as well, and four and seven. Item twenty-six is our next one?
Uh...
Let's go ahead... Oh, sorry, is that a special meeting?
That's the closed session.
Okay. Okay. Let's hold twenty-six on the table as well for closed session. Okay, let's take up item number twenty first, and I believe there's a card on that, so... Or a couple cards. Pat McCosker is our first speaker on item twenty.
Pat McCosker, United Firefighters, good morning, council members. I'm here to ask you not to freeze the retiree subsidy, health subsidy for cops and firefighters today. You know, we've only had two meetings at the table on this one with the city. This is bad faith to move forward like this, to permanently freeze that benefit. First meeting was only one in which the city laid out for us what the finances were, and the second meeting was the first one in which we were given an offer by the city, an offer that was completely out of line with the other contracts you've entered into with the other employee groups in this city. It was a 10% takeaway of pensionable pay and benefits, and it included that 2% toward retiree health care that we know you're after. I read the mayor's letter that he circulated to all of you yesterday urging you to vote for this. I read what he said about how we've never paid for this benefit, and it's high time, essentially, that we start paying for this benefit. Let me tell you, that is false. We've been paying 9% out of pocket every single paycheck, firefighters and police officers in this city. At times, it's the city that hasn't paid for this benefit. At times, it's the city that has taken holidays when the stock market is performing. Now that the stock market isn't performing and your payment is going up, what you're really saying is, "We want more from you." We understand that. You want a bigger payment into the pension system that then comes back to us in the end in the form of a retirement check and an adequate medical subsidy. But it's all in the same pot. We've been paying our 9%, and we haven't been given an adequate opportunity to sit down at the table with you and work out a fair deal. This is wrong to move forward so quickly. This is wrong to pass it through committee. This is wrong to work with a deadline of July 15th so that you can save money on your payment to fire and police pensions, and in the process, take away a benefit that we've earned, and we ask you not to do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Paul Weber is our next speaker on twenty. Good morning.
Good morning. Paul Weber, President of Los Angeles Police Protective League. This issue is in front of you. The last time we met and discussed this, our agreement with the city was that the city would not move forward on this issue as long as we're in negotiations. We understand that you're being told that you have to move forward today, that today is the drop-dead date, that if you don't do it today, the city's going to cut a check. This is not going to be the first time the city of Los Angeles was late on a particular payment. The Pension Department, you have the ability to delay your payment. You don't have to make a decision today. The final ordinance, the final legal opinion supporting this, there's been dispute about it. The city attorney's office, we've been told, has been conflicted out. They had to go to an outside counsel to get an opinion. As of last night, there is no formal written opinion that we, as the bargaining unit, can look at to see whether or not this is even legal. Our concern is, is that we're still in ongoing negotiations as of this morning, and we ask you to take a step back, give us a couple of weeks to continue those negotiations before you make this move. Our members are going to see this as bad faith. They're going to see this as an effort to bully them to move forward on this 2%, and that is going to cause a lot of consternation within the police department. It's going to impact services to your constituents. The police chief has already made it abundantly clear that if we don't have a deal July 1st, everyone goes to 96 hours, 1,000 cops are off the street. That's what the contract says. We're trying to get through this, and I'm asking you to help us. Give us the time so we can wrap up this deal in the next two weeks. There is no reason for you to move forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. That will now take us to Donna Perman, who's in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Good morning. I think it's not fair the way they are ramming it through, especially with the special fund like sanitation, when it's June 30th, they're vested in July 1st or not anyway. This is not fair, the way you're doing this, where you're ramming it through. You've got to be able to work with the unions, and a lot of these people still want the health care with retiree, and I think they should have the choice, like you're ramming it down from the police and fire department. This is not the way to do it. Let's be more fair, and let's try to find a way to do this, perhaps without... Anyway, without conditions. Anyway, let's try to do it. It's not fair the way you're doing it. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. That will close public comment on item twenty. We'll take up items twenty and twenty-six together, if we may. Due to the closed session nature of twenty-six, we'll go into... Because we have so many people here, and we're going to take up the Wilshire bus lane next, let's go into the executive conference room, colleagues, and we will take up items twenty and twenty-six, and then we'll go ahead and then we'll come back for the other item. I think we're okay without twenty-one for a moment. We'll come back and we'll make sure that we get the cards on twenty-one as well. I know there's some things related, but they're not agendized for closed session, per se. Yeah. So we'll probably be in the back of folks for about, I don't know, a half hour or so, at least. So we'll be back shortly, but to not inconvenience you, we'll go back instead of clearing the chambers. So in accordance with California state law, we'll now go into executive session, and we'll return to take up the next item after that.
Hey, come on, man. Forget it, I'm going to school.
You have a choice to make. Make sure it's the right one.
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back! Get the message. Be prepared.
Water in L.A. is limited. Every drop is precious, but we can all do our share. Use a broom instead of a hose. Wash your car only with a shut-off nozzle. Fix water leaks. Choose drought-tolerant plants and run your sprinklers based on your street address. Odd addresses on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and even addresses on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. The future of L.A. is in our hands, and that's a good thing.
California's agriculture and environment are under attack by something which may appear harmless, but its damage is very real. The damage by invasive pests. Learn about stopping their attack at HungryPests.com, because they're here and they're hungry.
I'll be home in a minute.
Well, the party's just getting started, so hurry home, honey.
Talk to ya.
Yes! Good job!
Slow down. Your family is waiting for you. Watch the road.
Hay escasez de agua en Los Ángeles. Cada gota es preciosa. Todos podemos hacer nuestra parte. Use una escoba en vez de manguera. Lave autos con válvula de sierra automático. Repare fugas. Use rociadores los días que le corresponden a su domicilio. Domicilios impares los lunes, miércoles, y viernes. Domicilios pares los martes, jueves, y domingos. Antes de las nueve de la mañana o después de las cuatro de la tarde. El futuro está en nuestras manos, y eso es algo bueno.
What's up, boxer? Where you from?
Hey, what's up, Johnny? What's up?
Hey, good morning!
Man, come on! Yeah, I'm a friend, right? I'm a friend, right?
Hey, come on, man!
Forget it. I'm going to school.
You have a choice to make. Make sure it's the right one!
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Water in L.A. is limited. Every drop is precious, but we can all do our share. Use a broom instead of a hose. Wash your car only with a shut-off nozzle. Fix water leaks. Choose drought-tolerant plants and run your sprinklers based on your street address. Odd addresses on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And even addresses on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays before 9:00 a.m. or after 4:00 p.m. The future of L.A. is in our hands, and that's a good thing.
Hey, come on, man!
Forget it, I'm going to school.
I'm glad these kids made the right choice.
Welcome back to open session. Thank you again, everybody, for your extraordinary patience. We have a very pressing issue that had to be resolved for the coming year's budget. We will be taking up the bus lane issue right after this. We have before us Item 20. We exhausted the conversation on Item 26, so we just have Item 20 before us. We have a substitute motion that is being circulated as we speak that was introduced by Mr. Coretz and myself and Mr. Parks and seconded by Mr. Wesson. That will circulate, and we will take a vote. That substitute is a substitute for the previous ordinances, so this will be one single vote on Item 20. So wait, just hold on one second, and that'll be made available as well for the public, too. And our city clerk is passing that out. Okay, we have both of those copies. Mr. Smith has the second copy for Mr. Wesson. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, anybody wishing to be heard on Item Number 20? Okay, if everybody's prepared for the vote on 20, as amended, with a substitute motion that has now been circulated? Please prepare the roll. It was just put on your desk. Sure. We'll hold a couple minutes for that. And the CAO is available for any questions about it if colleagues have any questions. The CAO's office would like to come forward, if you could come to the table just for a second, to explain 20C. Well, besides reading it, folks... The CAO is here to give an overview of that. The CAO is here to give an overview of that. The ordinance which is to be attached is also being circulated as part of 20C, and then the CAO will give a quick overview, so folks know what vote is before them. That's being circulated, Mr. CAO. Would you like to summarize?
Sure. Thank you. What you have before you is a recommendation to adopt an ordinance that is similar to what was adopted for the civilian workforce. As you know, two weeks ago, your body approved an ordinance that basically freezes any future increases for retiree healthcare benefits for those individuals that work for the city today who have chosen, for a variety of reasons, not to make a contribution towards that benefit. We, there currently, the majority of the coalition members, which represent 60% of the workforce, have opted to make a 4% contribution to ensure that that benefit gets vested in the future. We have reached out to the remaining bargain units on the civilian side. Some of them have indicated that they do not intend to go and, for a vote on this matter. Others were reaching final days in negotiations. What this is, is basically a counterpart motion that would do the same activity when it comes to our sworn personnel. We have had multiple discussions with the sworn bargain units on this issue. This first was brought up over two months ago, when we were directed to sit down and work with them to come up with an alternative. The way this motion is written and the corresponding ordinance, it allows for an alternative approach to freezing the benefits should we reach a resolution with the sworn personnel between now and the next 30 days. It is our intention to continue negotiating with the sworn bargain units to reach a resolution as soon as possible, and we are hopeful that we could reach some kind of resolution. But at the same time, what this ordinance does, it allows you, under the discretion that the charter has given you, to freeze or cap the benefit for those employees who have not agreed to make a contribution to keep that benefit vested from here on forward.
Okay. We have the ordinance that's been circulated. Mr. Labons, did you? Mr. Labons, you're on the queue. Did you want to say anything?
I just hit my knuckles.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Rosendahl?
Comment. Look, we're in a tough world at the moment, and I think this is an excellent way to move forward. I have been saying since day one, we have to reinvest in our own healthcare and in our own pensions if we want the city to provide services to its constituents. It's not easy for anyone, but frankly, it's the best that makes sense because we're investing in ourselves. And when everybody understands it's all about that, they have to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. That's then to the queue, then. Ms. Hahn.
Well, in light of that, I don't want, if I vote no on this, it's not because I don't believe that. I just would rather see the parties negotiate this themselves rather than us doing it here today. So it's not that I don't believe what you're saying, it's just I have a different opinion on how we get there.
Thank you. All right. We are prepared now for a vote with the substitute, 20C. Okay, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Okay, that is approved. We will next go, we've been holding, sorry, Mr. City Attorney?
The ordinance itself will go over 30 days because it's a pension ordinance.
Okay. So that will be back in 30 days here. That is not a final reading of that. We will next go to the bus lane item that was called special, Item Number 22, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Smith.
Introduction, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, colleagues. It's great to have Narbonne High School in the house. From Harbor City, one of the great high schools in my district. We have 25 students who are here, three adults. Ms., I don't know how to pronounce your name. Gautier. Welcome to City Hall, Narbonne, and good luck. You guys are almost out for the summer. Anyway, we appreciate your visit down here. You're a great high school, and we're very proud of all your achievements.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. We're going to go to Item Number 1, the appointment of the Commissioner in respect of the volunteer who's been sitting here to be confirmed. Commissioner Desnay, Item Number 1, please.
Good morning.
Morning, welcome. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I thank you for allowing Mr. Norton to step to the center table. He's been waiting all morning, and I want to thank him. As a volunteer and commissioner, he is being considered for the Central Area Planning Commission. Council members Weisar and Krikorian both voted to confirm his appointment. I want to thank him for his service. Just share a little bit about your background and your contribution to this commission.
Sure. I've been involved in the construction industry for 24 years. I think I bring a balanced approach to development and planning, and I think with that background, I understand the issues and have certainly sympathetic to all different points of views, the community, business, and certainly the residents of the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that, if there are no other questions, I'd like to recommend his approval.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have anything you wish to say?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There's no speakers on the queue. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner, and welcome to the City of Los Angeles family. All right, we'll take up Item 22 next, please.
Different points of view. What happened to my top here?
Good morning. To begin, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you, and good morning, everyone at the table and the community here. We have 100 cards, just a logistic issue I'd like to work out. There might be three different points of views out there. 5.4 miles, 7.7, 8.7, and there might be another position. With 100 cards and with the council where it's at here, we're going to do 30 minutes among everyone. We've had discussions for weeks and months on this, so what I'd like to suggest, if we can figure out who's speaking for what positioning, you could talk among yourselves, caucus a little bit, so we can do a half an hour. And in that half an hour, I'd like to be one minute per speaker. So if you can arrange yourselves, it's hard to say who's for or against because there's three different positions at least. So if we could have a little conversations while the staff is giving us a quick update on what we're dealing here, and then we'll have 30 minutes for the public discussion on the Wilshire bus-only lane. Staff, give us a quick overview on what we're doing here for my colleagues' benefit especially.
All right, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll have a 30-minute and one minute maximum per speaker. If there's no objections, seeing none, go ahead. Staff?
Good morning. Jaime de la Vega, Department of Transportation. Council, you have before you three options for peak hour bus lanes on Wilshire Boulevard. Option A, which was the original recommendation of DOT and MTA staff, is 8.7 miles from Parkview in the east to Centinela in the west, excluding Beverly Hills. Alternative A1 is the same option. It excludes a one-mile section in Westwood between Selby and Comstock. And Alternative A2 is a 5.4-mile section east of Beverly Hills only. I think you recall previously, council did take a position supporting end-to-end bus lanes, and last month, the MTA Board of Directors endorsed Alternative A1. Council has full discretion in this matter to pick any of the three alternatives before you. Furthermore, MTA cannot implement the bus lane program without concurrence from the council. Brad McAllister from MTA is here. I want him to speak to FTA timing issues briefly.
Brad McAllister, Metro staff. The timeline, FTA has advised us that tomorrow is the deadline for the application, so your decision here today is, time is of the essence in proceeding. We, FTA is working with us so that, they have told us that we have until mid-July, but that they cannot guarantee the grant, so your decision here today is very important. If you pick a different alternative from what Metro has picked, it does need to go back to the Metro Board, and in order to proceed in getting funding, there needs to be agreement between City Council and Metro on our project.
Yeah, just to clarify, the City of San Monica also is not participating in the project as currently proposed. And just to add what Brad said, I think one of the key considerations for the council today is the issue of funding risk with the FTA. If the council does endorse Alternative A1, then the application from the MTA and city can proceed immediately and would maximize the chances of a timely review from FTA. If the council chose a different alternative, we'd anticipate the MTA Board of Directors would take that up next Thursday, a week from Thursday at their next scheduled board meeting. There would be some risk that FTA would not be able to process the application in a timely manner, in which case there would be a risk that this region would lose the funding. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll begin with public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, please remember, we only got 30 minutes here, so please try to be short, succinct, and not repeat something that's already been said if you can. The first three speakers will be Joseph Dunn, followed, and please come up and follow and get in line, Jared Wright and Jan Reichman.
My name is Joseph Dunn, one of the three Board of Directors of Southern California Transit Advocates, and we stand side by side with the Bus Riders Union and the Transit Coalition for the implementation of the bus-only lane on Wilshire. However, we had so much urge for the lane to be built in its entirety, although, all of Wilshire and not bits and pieces as currently proposed. Rex Kefart from the MTA created the rapid bus lane and wanted to model it from the Curitiba system in Brazil. However, Curitiba has dedicated lanes for their system, but rapid buses here in Los Angeles do not and ought to be as well in order to have the rapid bus to work. Please don't cave into Beverly Hills and Brentwood and NIMBYs as they do not want you to go ahead with our future. With them, they would want you to go back to eight-track tapes and have one phone company. If they hate the traffic as it stands, then they too have a responsibility to use transit as well as, and get their cars off the road. This is the only solution. If you, councilperson, like getting stuck in traffic, vote no. But if you hate the traffic jam, then vote yes. Thank you for your opportunity, for the opportunity to speak, and vote your conscience.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council President. Gerard Wright, Transportation Co-Chair of Angeles Chapter of Sierra Club. We here to support, support Alternative A1 on the, what you have in front of you. We want to at least highlight two key points on the reason for the section west of the 405, which is the topic of must consternation today. The bus lanes, new eastbound dedicated bus lane from Barrington to the 405 will improve traffic for automobiles. Bus lanes west of the VA Hospital will be very important to serve the future Purple Line subway for travelers going to and from that location and heading out west. It is foolhardy to make it, to suggest including Santa Monica in the proposed solution when you do not have that connection to Centinela Avenue, which is contradictory to what Councilman Rosendahl is saying. So Sierra Club supports Alternative A1. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jan Reichman, and followed will be by Florence Chapkar, Constance Buchtes, and Woody Joseph.
My name is Jan Reichman, and I'm a Westsider. What I find really offensive is calling us rich Westsiders who don't care about people who need to go to work. It is the worst sort of grandstanding with absolutely no basis, in fact. I have attended most of the hearings on the BRT. What I have never heard acknowledged is that the one-mile Westwood segment that MTA agrees should be removed from Comstock to Selby is the fastest-moving stretch in all of Wilshire. It is the only stretch of Wilshire that is all residential, aside from churches with preschools and an assisted living project. Buses and cars go at top speed. In fact, it's difficult for pedestrians to even cross Wilshire. Messing with something that works right now for bus riders and drivers is not smart. Removing a lane of traffic during rush hour is not smart. Leaving it alone because it's working just fine is smart. Please support Metro's 7.7, Alternative A1.
Thank you very much. Florence Chapkar?
Councilmen, thank you. Eli Dot's proposal to narrow the sidewalks in Brentwood means eliminating some bus benches at locations where they would violate the Americans with Disability Acts. The sidewalk would be reduced to eight feet. When the city plan calls for the sidewalks to be 12 feet wide, if the sidewalks are narrowed, nine large mature trees providing shade and pollution control would be removed. Only Alternative A2 save these trees. In addition, there are over 60 students who wait for a bus in front of the 7-Eleven every afternoon. When concern was raised, outrageous response from Eli Dot was that the students could spill over in the heavily busy parking lot of the 7-Eleven. Alternative A2 protects the safety of students and disabled pedestrian. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Constance Buchtes?
As a lifelong Westwood resident, Director on the Westwood Neighborhood Council and PTA President at Fairburn Avenue Public Elementary School, I support Alternative A1, supported by Metro and the mayor, the 7.7-mile version of this project. I support Alternative A1 because this is what common sense dictates. That's why the MTA Board and the mayor concur with us and voted that buses in the Comstock-Selby segment continue to run in mixed-flow traffic. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. This Wilshire residential segment already has the fastest travel times on Wilshire. Evidence shows that this 8.8-mile proposal will only improve bus speeds in this segment by six seconds at best. Evidence shows that that proposal will increase congestion, pollution, and safety issues. Local Westwood residents and parents Local Westwood residents in parents in the thousands support alternative A1. Please support that. Don't risk losing the grant.
Thank you very much. Woody Joseph, and while Mr. Joseph is coming forward, the next group will be Sun Yung Yang, Raymond Klein, and Nancy Friedman.
I want to urge the council to adopt A1 so that they don't lose this money and can move on with this project, and to have the full bus-only lane, because it's also a bicycle lane as well. And I'm a volunteer with the Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition, and I feel safer riding in a lane with, that I share with buses than a lane that I share with just traffic. Wilshire is a very difficult road to ride right now, and these improvements will make Wilshire a more ridable road, and we don't need to pander to the car drivers who already have more lanes than anyone else out there by far in this city. We need to have more lanes for buses and more lanes for bicycles. There's more people who ride buses on Wilshire than ride cars. So it's time to stand up for the bus riders. It's time to have bus-only lanes all over the city. This is the first step, and we need to continue having more bus lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sun Yung Yang. Please also follow Mr. Klein, Raymond Klein, and Nancy Friedman or Friedman.
Good morning, council. This has been a six-year-long project that the Bus Riders Union has been advocating, and we're here today because there's an important decision in terms of adopting either a 7.7 or an 8.7 alternative or a 5.4 alternative. We think that the 8.7 alternative is the best option out there, the most comprehensive option out there. And that's primarily because we, when we applied for the federal funding, that was a project that we promised, a comprehensive project that's going to deliver the benefits and get people out of their cars. We ask you to carefully deliberate today and make the best, choose the best option because this is about, you know, putting LA City, laying the record that the LA City can deliver what they promised to the federal government. And right now, given the conditions in the Republican Congress, wanting to cut all transit funding in the federal level, LA needs to demonstrate that it can deliver. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Raymond Klein?
Good afternoon. I wish I was smart enough to say this without making it sound like a threat, but unless you vote for A2, which is bus lanes only east of Beverly Hills, you face the risk of a sequel lawsuit because among the many deficiencies in the EIR are the fact that not one intersection or street in Brentwood was included in the study. There was no study of the impacts of narrowing the sidewalks to 8 feet, which is supposed to be 12 feet. There was no study of taking away bus stops, which DOT now says they would have to do. Can you believe it? This is supposed to be about bus riders, and they're going to take away bus stops in order to narrow the sidewalks. There was no study of removing nine trees. There was no study of the impact of narrowed sidewalks on the subway patrons in the VA area, and many key statistics in the EIR are inconsistent or inadequate.
Thank you very much. Nancy Friedman, and we followed by Marilyn Krell, Morgan Nguyen or Nguyen, and Serena Lynn.
Nancy Friedman, Brentwood Community Council. I spoke with FTA yesterday, and there was no indication that there was a deadline for tomorrow. I just wanted to interject that. Metro's intent of the bus-only lane in Brentwood is to have drivers drop the car for the bus to save three minutes, even if they're just, if they're not going downtown, they could be going to Westwood. That doesn't constitute a timeframe. However, many people justifiably cannot get to their place of work on the bus. How many of you here today took the bus? Raise your hand. Anybody? No, I mean, I mean people here. Furthermore, well, food for thought. Furthermore, add another lane on Wilshire, and they will come. You invite more cars, which ends up in a merge tangled up with the buses at the 405 junction. The buses whiz through, they stop at the junction, and they have to merge with cars. So you lose the time that you're supposed to make up. Bill Rosendale knows this situation all too well and deserves credit to correct it with alternative A2. This is the only proposal that addresses the obligation of the LA City Council to equally represent your constituents, rich or poor, bus riders or car drivers, people walking or people riding bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Krell?
Hello, I'm Marilyn Krell. I am president of South Brentwood Residents Association. Thank you. We represent about 3,000 homeowners and renters just north of Wilshire between Centinela and Federal. Whatever you decide, this bus lane impacts us directly. We are not NIMBYs, we're not racists, we're not against bus lanes, we are against gridlock. During the trial in 2006, cars were diverted onto our residential streets, making driving through South Brentwood a nightmare. That trial was aborted because of its failure. We're afraid that the disaster from the trial will become permanent. I just want to say one thing, and I hate to say this, but if you do decide to include Brentwood, please have some kind of, some kind of provision to exclude Brentwood if there's a failure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Morgan Nguyen or Nguyen?
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Morgan Nguyen, and I'm attorney with the NRDC, the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm here to urge you to adopt the full 8.7-mile alternative or even the compromised 7.7-mile alternative. You see, the longer the, longer the route, the more the buses can pick up speed and offer a faster option for commuters. One of the goals of this project is to make the bus faster and to attract car drivers to take the bus instead to get out of their cars. The 5.4-mile alternative will not achieve this goal. I also encourage you to move forward confidently. MTA and L.A. DOT did a thorough analysis with a lot of public input that addressed everybody's concerns. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And Serena Lynn, is it Serena?
Serena.
Serena.
My name is Serena Lynn. I'm with public counsel. For over 40 years, public counsel has defended the civil rights of working families, vulnerable children, immigrants, and communities of color. Every year, we also represent hundreds of veterans who are returning from Iraq and Afghanistan, vets who need to go to the VA and access medical and other social services. Many of these vets need the bus to go to the VA, and we've seen many vets miss appointments because of delays. A vet who misses an appointment at the VA may have to wait two to three months just to get another appointment. Our vets deserve better. Missed appointments also cost the public desperately needed dollars and cents we don't have in this economy. While we'd love to see the full bus-only lane, we support A1 as an acceptable alternative. We strongly oppose the 40% Westside carve-out. In our view, this proposal raises significant civil rights concerns relative to disability access. This option jeopardizes $23 million of federal funding for this project. The 720 line is not just transportation. For our vets, the 720 is a lifeline from Skid Row to Hope. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Sarah Melzer, Susan Casa Massima, and Jason Elias. Sarah Melzer? No Sarah Melzer? Next, okay. Susan Casa Massima, and then followed by Jason Elias.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Melzer. I'm a member of the Brentwood Community Council, and I favor improving the bus route for bus riders, ultimately extending it from downtown to Santa Monica Beach. But is the current plan in the best interest of the riders and the community itself? No, because it was done in haste and is not well thought out. The current plan proposes a fragmented route with the bus riders and car drivers forced to stop and start continually to merge back into the changing traffic lanes. The time the bus will gain in having a dedicated lane will be lost largely by having to merge back into traffic. I therefore support Councilman Rosendale's A2 position. It makes sense to proceed in stages to make the bus route contiguous, begin in a first phase from downtown to the east border of Beverly Hills, and then see how it works. Then expand the route later in contiguous segments, gaining the support of Beverly Hills, its end of Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Susan Casa Massima, Brentwood Community Council. Dealing with transportation in Southern California is a Southern California issue, and I commend the City Council for trying to develop the bus lane project. Based on what you said this morning, it seems that it's all about the federal funding. You're trying to cram down a program of A1 because you're afraid you won't get the federal funding. That's no way to institute a program, a bus lane, that's going to be ineffective. Implementing the plan for 15 miles makes sense. Implementing it for 7.7 or 8.7 is foolhardy because it stops and starts and stops and starts, and you're going to create more problems than you solve. I support Bill Rosendale's plan for the 5.4 Phase 1, negotiations with other cities, and then making it 15 miles.
Thank you very much. Jason Elias? Jason Elias going twice. No Jason Elias. Next three speakers, Jerry Brown, Sandy Brown, and Stephen Resnick.
I'm Jerry Brown, President of the Westwood Neighborhood Council, which has taken a position, supporting the exclusion of the Glendon, sorry, Selby to Comstock segment. If you, which basically means supporting the A1 stance. If you include the bus lane only in the segment between Comstock and Selby, you will be spending $7.5 million, which is approximately 20 to 25% of the cost of the entire project, to remove jutouts and to create no increase in the bus transit time in that area. In addition to that, you will be imposing a substantial increase in transit time for motorists. So I strongly urge your support of the A1 proposition. Seven and a half million bucks can be used elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Brown?
Good morning. My name is Sandy Brown, and I'm with the Coalition, and I'm president of the Homie Westwood Property Owners Association. I want to recommend the same recommendation that was given by the MTA Board, and that is the A1 segment of the 7.7 miles. We did a study with Raju Associates, a very well-respected engineering firm, who found that there would be no impacts in the bus-only lane if Westwood were removed. And one other thing I would like to bring to your attention is, if Westwood, if the Westwood segment is not removed, there will be a 26% increase in the mixed-flow lane in travel time, and that would include the Rapid Red buses because they do use the mixed-flow lane. So I am here to support the A1 segment, and I hope that you will as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Resnick. While Mr. Resnick is coming forward, the next speaker will be Lauren Cole, Al Cassas, and Allison Manos.
Good afternoon. Stephen Resnick, President of the Westwood Homeowners Association, and I'm here along with, supporting the 10,000 residents of the Westwood area to ask you to approve alternative A1, which is removing the Comstock to Selby segment. This will cause in our neighborhood a loss of 100 parking spaces. It'll play havoc with intersections surrounding the, our neighborhood and the, cause a detriment to traffic flow. We ask that you do the same that, that Metro did and support alternative A1. Thank you.
Lauren Cole?
My name is Lauren Cole. I handle transportation issues for the Brentwood Committee Council and South Brentwood Residents Association. I wanted to ask you to support alternative A2. Alternatives A and A1 simply recreate the same conditions of the failed trials west of the 405 where bus lanes had to be taken out after they were put in. Metro is applying for the same amount of funding under all three alternatives, so there is no loss in funding for A2. Metro has identified additional repairs on the east end of the project that it would implement if bus lanes are not put in west of Beverly Hills. The goal of this entire project is to increase bus ridership, but adding bus lanes west of Beverly Hills doesn't do that. It only saves bus riders 3 to 4 minutes, 1 to 2 minutes west of the 405, which is not enough of a savings to get any new bus riders. Therefore, this project benefits no one. Putting in bus lanes west of the 405, however, ties up tens of thousands of commuters that come from all over the city to work in the area, most of whom are not coming down Wilshire Boulevard, so can't take the bus. Metro severely understates the delay. The money should, the city should spend money where it's needed rather than spend it in areas where it'll have to be taken out.
Thank you very much. Al Cassas or Cassus?
Yeah, I'm the Traffic Chair for the Westlake Neighborhood Council. Wilshire Boulevard is part of our jurisdiction, and again, we had a failed bus test that was tried for two years, I believe it was, and it didn't work. The city of Santa Monica, in their infinite wisdom, is going to build more buildings on Wilshire. They're also going to build more buildings on Olympic. You have 160,000 people that live in the city of Santa Monica and only 80,000, that work in the city of Santa Monica, and only 80,000 that come in, that live there. You are not going to have the people from the city of Santa Monica get on a bus and try to drive through downtown. They're going to take Wilshire, they're going to take Santa Monica, they're going to take Olympic and Pico, which are already congested and gridlocked. All you're going to do is save bus riders 3 minutes, but you're going to cause 20,000 or more cars to delay 20 or 25 minutes extra. And if you, I support, we support A2, which starts at its one continuous thing. If you were going to get Beverly Hills to...
Go ahead and complete, sir.
If you were going to get, if you're going to get Beverly Hills to cooperate and the city of Santa Monica to cooperate, then I wholeheartedly approve the use of Wilshire Boulevard. But since you're not, you're going to have a fragmented bus lane that's not going to work.
Okay, thank you very much. Allison Manos. And while Allison's coming forward, the next three speakers will be Bart Reed, Luis Cabralis, and Joanna Gaspar.
Hi, my name's Allison Manos, and I'm with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. I want to suggest first off that we extend the comment period because we're hearing mostly predominance of opposition against the lane, and I think more folks need to be able to speak. We, we support the full 8.7 miles. We don't think this issue is about sidewalks or congestion. A lot of the folks that say that congestion will increase should just get on the bus. We've, we've stated that before and that this is a regional equity impact that should, that should overcome any, any sort of concerns about neighborhood associations and congestion. It's really important, a lot of folks that we represent bike to work, and they would be able to use this bus-only lane as well. And so we, we want to support the majority of people who are either bike-riding or taking transit on the corridor rather than the minority of people who are driving.
Thank you very much. Bart Reed, folks, please come up. Bart Reed, Luis Cabralis, and Joanna Gaspar, please line up.
Hi, councilmembers. Bart Reed, Executive Director of the Transit Coalition. I've heard a lot of straw-dog arguments from the Brentwood people in terms of sidewalk width, delays to bus riders. The real truth is that one has to look at what moves the most amount of people on the corridor. The bus-only lane has a lot of public benefits. For example, there's only about 1,200 cars an hour that can go on those lanes in each direction, not the numbers that they're citing you. The same time, buses going through that same corridor can take roughly between 5,000, 10,000, to 20,000 riders an hour, and these are numbers you can actually look at. The bus lane in the Valley, people were worried that people wouldn't use it. They use it. The congestion point is critical at Brentwood, 405 Westwood, not in Santa Monica. Beverly Hills accommodates buses with no parking during the rush hour. It's a lot of jobs, and this city needs a lot of jobs, and there's environmental benefits. So we either support the 7.7 as a compromise or the 8.7, and we'd like to do that. Support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Luis Cabralis?
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. My name is Luis Cabralis. I am Deputy Director at Coalition for Clean Air. Coalition for Clean Air wants to urge the City Council to reject the Westside exemption and adopt the full 8.7 Wilshire bus lane alternative. Earlier, when voting for Agenda Item 20, Mr. Rosendale, you spoke about the need to make tough decisions when voting in investing in our communities. This is one such tough decision. Unfortunately, it's very popular among your constituents who want to see the lower, the least ideal lane of 5.7 miles in their community. However, should this be adopted, we are not only impacting transportation in the Los Angeles area, we are impacting transportation and federal funding in the whole Los Angeles region. As you know, this funding, or funding for this project came from the federal government. As you know, this funding, or funding for this project came from the federal government. And as you all have been working on a 30-10 program at the federal level, should we have to return this money to the federal government, this will impact our ability to get funding in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Joanna Gasparr will be followed by Crystal McMillan.
Chair, Joanna Gasparr's passing.
Herbie, she's passing. All right, thank you. Then Crystal McMillan, followed by Herbie Huff and Barbara Lot Holland.
My name is Crystal McMillan, and I'm a member of the Bus Riders Union. And I'm here today to urge this council to support the Wilshire bus-only lane without the West Side exemption. I'm a veteran, as are both of my parents. In addition to the 10 years I spent traveling along Wilshire for work, I also used it to take my father to the Veterans Hospital for medical care. While on the bus, I've met many veterans who use this as a line to the medical care at the Veterans Hospital, and I've seen firsthand the traffic problems that could be helped by the Wilshire bus-only lanes. Every day, the health of the citizens are being impacted by car emissions, and I've watched my young niece struggle daily with asthma. With this project, you have the potential to not only improve traveling conditions for the 90,000 people who board a Wilshire bus each day, but begin to address air quality for the 10 million citizens of LA County. For the first time in years, LA is making real strides in offering an alternative to single-car vehicles along one of the busiest corridors in the country. The Wilshire bus-only lanes will set the template for the entire city. If we pull it apart and reduce it, we're setting up the whole project for failure. Thank you very much. Please support the 8.7-mile option for the bus-only lanes.
Thank you very much. Herbie Huff?
Hi. My name's Herbie Huff, and I have a master's in urban planning from UCLA. And I'm here to highlight this open letter, which I believe you all have a copy of, and which is signed by over 50 academics and professionals in the field of transportation planning. These are people who are not necessarily transportation advocates. They represent expertise not only on transportation issues, but also in climate action, labor and employment, urban and environmental policy. They include some names you might recognize, like Professor James Moore of USC, James Rojas, Bob Gottlieb. And the open letter supports the complete 8.7-mile Wilshire bus rapid transit project. I just want to highlight some of the points in here. Alternative A produces the most dramatic time savings, moves the most people, and generates the largest mode shift. More people move in the bus-only lane on buses than will move in it as a mixed lane with cars. Only four intersections are predicted to have over eight seconds of delay under the complete project. So I urge you to consider this letter carefully as you deliberate this issue.
Thank you very much. Crystal McMillan has already spoken, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And also Barbara, again, so we've had that twice. Jose Estrada, followed by Clifton Moore and David Holtzman.
Buenas tardes. Yo soy Jose Estrada. Yo vengo del sur centro de Los Angeles, de nuestra organización que se llama CUSLA.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Estrada.
One moment, por favor.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Estrada. I come here from South Los Angeles, an organization called...
Okay. Nuevamente soy Jose Estrada. Yo vengo del sur centro de Los Angeles, de una organización CUSLA que somos...
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Estrada. I come from South Los Angeles, and I'm a member of an organization called...
Somos la sesión de comunidades unidas del sur de Los Angeles.
We're a united community in South Los Angeles.
En esta oportunidad estamos apoyando al sindicato de pasajeros.
We're here in support of the bus riders union.
Y solicitamos a ustedes, señor, por favor, que se apruebe la propuesta de 8.7.
Well, we're asking you is to please approve alternative, one momento, señor, the alternative that provides the 8.7 mile for bus-only lane.
Porque es una alternativa mucho más viable.
Because it's a more viable alternative.
Que aceleraría el proceso de movilización de todos los vecinos de todo el área de Los Angeles.
And it will speed the motor transportation for passenger movement for the residents of all the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Gracias. Clifton Moore?
Barbara did not speak.
Clifton Moore is not here?
Barbara did not speak.
Pardon me?
Didn't you call Barbara?
Barbara Holtzman?
No.
Barbara Holtzman. You're Ms. Lot Holland?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we called you once, or this is the first time?
This is the first time.
My apologies. Go ahead.
No problem. Good morning. Barbara Lot Holland, Co-Chair of the Bus Riders Union, resident of South Los Angeles. We are supporting the full 8.7-mile project as this is the right course, and we urge this board to do the same. Thousands of South Los Angeles residents use the Wilshire corridor, going north, going east, and west for education, healthcare, and of course, most important job opportunities. This is a gateway to many of our lives. If we do not secure the bus-only lane now, Phase 2 will never happen. This five-mile project will be setting the bus-only lane up for failure. The city is now facing, as parks, my councilman knows, unemployment and budget deficits huge. This project secures $23 million from the federal government and creates over 100 jobs for this area. We are urging this city council to vote for the 8.7 miles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Holtzman? David Holtzman? Okay, next speaker. The last name's Roman. R-O-M-A-N-N. Looks like Eric. Next speaker will be Hillary Norton.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Eric Roman from the Bus Riders Union. Show of hand from the council members who like to make public policy decisions on the basis of the threats of baseless lawsuits. Any takers? All right. LEO DOT and MTA staff have done two EIRs, and then in addition, one supplemental EIR. They've studied this project to death. They found that traffic impacts in Brentwood is a whopping 49 seconds of additional traffic delay for drivers there, a total of three minutes for the entire West Side. On the flip side, the average bus rider can save up to 30 minutes per day back and forth because of the bus-only lane, the full-length bus-only lane, 8.7 miles. In short, what you have in front of you, lawsuit-proof EIR with basically no evidence in support of the threats of lawsuits from the West Side. We urge you to move forward, do the smart thing, adopt the 8.7-mile bus-only lane. Lastly, I will also say, as many of you know, the Republicans in Congress are threatening to cut a lot of transportation funding. We need to hold on to as much transportation funding as we can, so don't return any funds to Washington. Support the full project, 8.7 miles. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary Norton. And that will conclude our speaker list.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Thank you so much for your consideration of this very, very difficult issue. My name is Hillary Norton. I'm the Executive Director of FAST, Fixing Angelino Stuck in Traffic, a business, labor, education, and neighborhood group coalition to support short-term solutions to our traffic. We are here to support the 7.7-mile route, not because we don't think that 8.7 miles is optimal. We do. But to be practical in this timeline, we think 7.7 is the only choice to get us to where we need to be to get the entire funding and to start this project the way it needs to be. My children are here to see you make this very historic vote, to support bus riders, to support options that get people out of their cars, give people cheaper solutions, and get people to and from jobs all over this city, and we thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our 30 minutes of public hearing. We'll now go to the council queue. First in the queue is Mr. Coretts.
Could we have staff come back up here, Mr. Chair?
What would happen if the Board of Supervisors rejected the 8.7 option where we descended to them and sent it back to us to ask us once again to approve the 7.7, as they've already approved? What would that do to the timeline?
All three, we, the Board of Supervisors, the City Council, and Metro all need to agree on a project that involves them. So for either A1 or A2, that does include a portion in the county, and the county Board of Supervisors would need to approve and agree.
The Board has already approved the 7.7. So if we, MTA's approved it. So, and we know the Board, and certainly Supervisor Yaroslavsky on the Board of Supervisors is a strong supporter of the 7.7. So if it gets rejected at either of those levels and comes back to us, what does that do to the timing?
The project would be at high risk of not being funded. We have to have an executed agreement with FTA by September 15th, and they've advised us of the intermediate deadlines in order to get there. Number one is, the application is due tomorrow, but they've indicated that they can work with us through mid-July, but that they can't promise that it'll go through. So the closer, the longer this delays between now and the mid-July, the higher the risk of not receiving the funding. And the feds cannot promise that they can process it in time.
Well, colleagues, I would argue for the 7.7 option, the A1, the one that's already been approved at other levels, both because it's the only one that doesn't provide extra delays and potential uncertainty for the whole project getting approved. But at the same time, it removes the one-mile stretch that actually provides nothing to the project. It saves only a few seconds, if that, because traffic already moves well in that section. But it does worsen intersections, and it does cause some safety concerns. So while many people argued for the whole stretch, nobody really could address the fact that nothing is gained by keeping that section in, other than the feeling that we approved the whole thing. The fact is, it only has negatives, it has no positive elements to keeping that one-mile section in, because there's no significant time savings to that section. So colleagues, I ask that you not jeopardize the whole project. I ask that you not leave any section that provides no positives and only negatives to the project, and I ask that you vote for the A1 option.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosenthal, continue your introduction.
Thank you. In my introduction, folks, I just want to make a few things clear. If we do a bus-only lane, it really should be, as Mr. Alekhan said before, no politics in this. And that's over 15 miles. That's from the ocean, Santa Monica, which creates all the congestion in my district, to downtown. So what do we have? We have three options that came out of various kinds of politics, okay? My particular problem with Santa Monica not participating, it is, I just got a little bit over a mile and a half. It's from Federal, which is right after the VA, to Centinela, which is the border with Santa Monica. I would love a bus-only lane right now, from downtown to UCLA, from downtown to the VA. But when it comes in on the other side of the 405, it is an absolute disaster. Right now, it takes you to go that little piece of land there about an hour. You can walk faster than you can. And if they want to tear up my sidewalks just to put in a couple of lanes and not let Santa Monica participate, that is real, really bad politics. And when they talk about money with the Washington, we've had 10 years to work on this project. The Bus Union lady said she's been working on it for six years. And if they can't get Pam O'Connor, who sits on the MTA Board, to play ball with us, and if they can't get Beverly Hills to play ball with us over a 10-year period, and the bus riders a six-year period, somebody's failed at MTA. Somebody's failed throughout this process. When I first got elected, Cindy Misakovsky had the one mile. It was complete chaos in my district. People coming from Santa Monica where they're working, and all of a sudden they got to squeeze in, and then it even got worse, okay? So I pulled that mile away, after I called Zev Yaroslavsky, after I called Antonio Viera Gose, after I called a lot of other people in these other towns, and I said, "All of you, get together. Bus-only lane, makes sense. I'm for buses. I believe in buses. I put the 722nd there in Venice Boulevard, okay? But no, no, no. Politics ruled Mr. Alekhan like it always does." So the only clean piece that has no problems is the 5.4 miles. And don't talk about federal funding. This has come back and forth and up and down. I'm the one who pushed for the federal funding, not the mayor, not Zev Yaroslavsky, no one. Because I happen to believe in a bus-only lane. But I don't believe in what it's going to do to my people and absolutely make it worse. It'll make it more chaotic than it's ever been, and it's already bad enough. So I just say, folks, go with the 5.4. It's the least problematic. But if you can't do that, do 15 and make Santa Monica and Beverly Hills play ball with us, so we have a legitimate route. But if you can't do that, get it to UCLA and get it also to the VA. Because right on the other side of VA is Federal. That's where the squeeze gets so ridiculous that my folks in West LA, Brentwood, and all the folks coming out of work in Santa Monica get into that congestion. So Santa Monica, cut out playing games. You sit on that board. And you know, Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, we love you and all that, and you're in the heart of our city. You have to play ball, too. So colleagues, if you can do a vote here today, do the 5.4, and that's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we discussed this at great length at Tea Committee, and I think one of the concerns I have is that as we talk about who this impacts, and we talk about who it helps, all the conversations are people in cars. And the real people that we're trying to help are those that are on the bus. And that's the ones that will ride the full length of the 8.7 miles. And it also, clear indication of the need, is that the ridership on this bus rides a longer segment than any other bus in the city of Los Angeles. They ride over six miles from MacArthur Park to six miles later into West LA. So our perception, even if we stereotype, is they're probably going to work. And in going to work, they're riding six miles to get there. And so I would hope that as we go through this, that we would not be taking segments out. We would not be making decisions about those in cars. We'd be making decisions about those who ride the bus, generally people who have no choice except to ride the bus. And that we make it to the point to where the city of LA is going to make a concerted effort to make the bus system work, just as we're using Measure R to make the rail system work. It's incumbent on us to help people who have no choices. Those who are complaining about the intersection crossings and the delay, those are the people that we're trying to attract out of their cars to the bus, so public transportation will take the thousands of passengers and cars off the street. So if we make it easier and say that we're going to make it faster for cars, we defeat the purpose of even having a bus lane. And I think it's important, as we talked about in the Tea Committee, if we keep our eye on the prize and our eye on who we're trying to help, we will make a decision based on ridership. And the ridership is the key, because remember, the folks that are riding out to the West Side often do not have access to affordable housing to live on the West Side, to where they wouldn't have to ride the bus. So you're giving a community two ops, two opt-outs. They're not providing the affordable housing that's needed, and now we're saying, "Let's not give the bus riders an opportunity to ride the entire duration to where they can get to work and get home in a reasonable hour." And so I'd hope that we take out this whole issue of taking segments out, because I don't think the segment on the far west is any more important than Mr. Rosenthal's segment. But the issue is, it just complicates the matter, and we lose sight of the whole issue of why we are talking about a bus-only lane. To get 29,000 people from MacArthur Park to the West Side and back in a reasonable hour, that's what we're trying to do with the bus lane. So I'd hope that we look at the full capacity, spend the money to the full capacity, get the most people moving, and also, as a added benefit, we just might get a few people who are frustrated about the crossing streets to leave their car at home and get on the same bus.
Mr. Ruiz-Ar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And at the MTA Board meeting, which I participated in, the vote was unanimous for the 7.7, and that was the one abstention. I had argued for the 8.7. At that meeting, I asked various questions that tried to focus on what's the difference between 8.7 and 7.7. I really couldn't see any additional benefits by reducing it to the 7.7, so I decided to abstain, knowing that this item would come before the full council. And I'm willing to go with the 8.7 in support, that I still haven't heard anything other than some concerns about local neighborhoods, but there's a lot more benefit to doing the full length rather than taking out a few segments. I really don't see how much more benefit that's going to give us. But today's the first time I did hear about risks associated with funding. I just wanted to clarify that one more time. I don't, I really, I still don't understand it. If we were to do, let's say, an 8.7 today, or a 5.3, something different from what Metro did... did, it'll go back to Metro in how long?
We would plan on taking it back to Metro for next week's board meeting.
Next week's board meeting?
Yes.
And what happens there? Let's say the Metro sticks to its guns and says it wants 7.7. Who's, who has the ultimate say? Is it gonna come back to council, or what happens after that? If they agree with us or disagree with us, what happens after that?
Well, if, if, if the Metro Board agreed with you, then we would have agreement with the City Council, and if there's a county portion, it would still have to be approved by the county, depending on the alternative. So A1 and Alternative A both have that county portion around the 405. A2 does not. If the Metro Board does not agree with City Council, then there's no agreement. So presumably, it would come back to City Council to consider what the Metro's action. And we have, you know, FTA has agreed to work with us without promising that they'll be able to execute the agreement between now and July, mid-July. And so the longer there is no agreement, the higher the risk that we'll lose the money, because the less time FTA has to process the review that, you know, they have to make a final decision on the environmental document, and they have to execute a grant agreement by September 15th.
And in terms of process, I mean, we need to agree. Both bodies need to agree. And we somehow are taking votes by both legislative, well, both legislative bodies, but we really are taking a risk not knowing which direction each is gonna go. It could be ping pong, for all we know, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, this is a very heavily-used corridor by bus riders, and there's been talk before about how some bus-only lanes now work, but certainly, this is one where the demand is there. And this, you could see for obvious reasons, that it's gonna relieve congestion both for cars and for bus riders who would have easier and quicker way of getting to their destination. You know, I'm still convinced that the 8.7-mile proposal is the way to go, but as they've said on the table, we have to come up with something that makes sense. If we can't come up with an agreed-upon solution, we certainly shouldn't put this out there to risk in the compromise position, maybe the 7.7. But we should try to take as much advantage of as much as we can do here, whatever that compromise is, or do the full point of 8.7, because doing any less is gonna be a huge disservice to both car riders and to bus riders alike in that region.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Labange.
Thank you. One question. One of the advocates for not extending it west of the freeway said, "If it is approved and it's a failure, would you discontinue it?" What's, what's the opportunity for that?
I think the department's view on that is, if we do run into performance issues or concerns in specific neighborhoods, we would have technical staff look at the nature of those problems and try to tweak the project and improve it and address those ultimately over a longer period of time. If the council views those issues as problematic, the council could direct the department to ultimately...
I'd just like to put that friendly member, friendly amendment, that if there's a situation anywhere on the route, that they seem, it's, as I was concerned greatly in the Miracle Mile until your engineer satisfied me, that with short blocks, there'd be tough right turns, accidents, collisions, all that stuff. You've looked at it, you said you would handle it, if there's an advice you'd have to do. I'd want that same fee for the West End. I believe we have to do so many things to help people with transit. It's real important. I also want to know, what thinking has gone by DOT and ever who's applying here, MTA and Caltrans, with all the work going on for the next several years at the freeway? How will this mesh together? Because there's, is there interchange improvements at the San Diego Freeway and Wilshire Boulevard? Are there off-ramp improvements?
Well, we worked with Caltrans and MTA on the 405 projects. We proposed some widening opportunities at the Wilshire Crossing 405, but because of the budget concern, they were not fully incorporated. So some of the widening opportunity actually reside on this Wilshire BRT project that we will be widening from Barrington to Federal and also further east to Banzo.
Will there be any better capacity underneath the 405 than Wilshire Boulevard?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, all right. So here's the situation. The, the area that has been deleted, that has a lot of jet outs. It's a lot of driveways, got a lot of problems. This starts at basically MacArthur Park, because that's where Wilshire becomes a full highway there, with a center lane and three traffic lanes in each direction. It starts, the bus starts at Commerce and goes all the way across the 720. Number-one bus line west of Manhattan, more boardings than any other bus in the city of Los Angeles, need to be done, more needs to be done. If the MTA said, this is what they recommend, that 1A, then I think that's equal, because every member of the Board of Supervisors sits on the MTA Board, okay? So I think we should follow that with that lead. I would like to see the whole thing, because we have a whole big problem. I'm, I'm, I'm a little sensitive to going west of Federal, Mr. Rosendahl, but I listen to the engineers, I'm sensitive to that issue, I understand that. But also, not West San Vicente, but East San Vicente from Venice Boulevard is a missed opportunity. It's the most underutilized street in the city. And if you're gonna use more rapid buses, which have been a success, I was on the MTA, and because of bus-driver advocates, they've improved this metro rapid, use some of these streets that already existed, the old red car lines, not necessarily West San Vicente, but the San Vicente in the heart of the city from Venice, from Midtown. Look at those opportunities. But I would say, if we want to be successful and move this, get people working, vote for 1A. Mr. Weston and I would say today, let's go out and do just the first part. We'll fix our districts. I was cooperative with Mr. Parks. I want Mr. Sparks to smile, because several years ago, he took money off of Wilshire Boulevard to the Expo line, right, Bernard? He did, too. He did, too, but was for a cause. It was for the Expo, which is important. He's very good at that. Anyway, I'm saying 1A, and I think all of us are important in this room. All of us are important in this room. It's all about neighborhoods and people, and that's what we try to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for your one question. Mr. Kukorian.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. As we're discussing these very important transportation issues and how we can encourage more Angelenos to get out of their cars, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that we're being joined by three students from Milliken Middle School, who've been here this morning with proposals for my staff and I about pedestrian safety, which were very insightful and very important. And so I just wanted to introduce Beau Slade, Gussie Millar, and Shanee Krebs, who are in the back there, future leaders of Los Angeles. Thank you for being with us.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'd like to call up, on my time, Councilmember, President, two of the speakers that wanted to speak, if, on my time, on my three minutes. If you get one, both of you come on up. There was two of you. That's one minute each. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. I'm Ryan Layman. I'm an urban planner and the co-chair of the Green LA Transportation Work Group. Green LA has been supporting the Wilshire Bus Lanes project since the beginning, and I want to thank the councilmembers Parks and Alarcon for supporting the full 8.7-mile project at the Transportation Committee last week, as well as Councilmember Jose Weezer for supporting it at the Metro Board meeting. In 2007, Councilmember Rosendahl and the City Council approved an application for the full 8.7-mile bus-only lanes without the cities of Beverly Hills and Santa Monica being, being involved on the project. So it is contradictory to now say that we need those cities for the project to make sense. We need to stick with our original proposal, which was a solid one. And I also just, I guess I don't have time, so I just want to urge you to support the full 8.7 miles. But if there aren't the votes to do that here today, we would also support the 7.7 miles, if that's the only way to, to move this forward. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Antayos Lasai. I'm from Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. I really, I can't agree more of Mr. Parks saying 100% agree with that. Normally, they are well their way around. And this is, you know, for one, $2 million, we did really drastic, and over 3,500 drivers we decided the other way. Now, this is in billions, and people cannot live in Brentwood or Condo Canyons. They live in Midtown. I know them, and they're doormans, they're bailmen, they're housekeepers. They want to travel in the town, they cannot live there and live in cheaper places. I know a lot of PhDs from UCLA, they live in Midtown and where they live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a minute left, and I'll push my button again. The colleagues, the average bus rider is surviving with $12,000 a year. When we look at who is hurting in the city, in zip code 915, one out of every 370 housing units have filed for foreclosure in the month of April. That tends to be in the area of John Perry's district. In my district, one out of every 605 housing units are right now going through the strain of foreclosure. So the backs of our working class are breaking. All we're asking is for the 8.7 miles, so they can get to their jobs, they don't lose their homes, they can maintain their families. Now, the domino effect here, socially, economically, multiplies itself exponentially. Every moment they spend longer on the bus, every moment they spend longer at the bus stop means less time with family, less time supervising children, less time looking for education, less time be able to address their own quality of life, because they're spending all those hours on the bus. I know this. I took the bus from Cypress Park to UCLA for a year in my college days, and that took one hour and a half to two hours. I had to start at four or five in the morning, get to class by seven or eight, I'd stay until one in the morning. And with me were folks who were cleaning the houses, tending the children, taking care of the seniors. There's a whole population migrating at that time that we do not see. So colleagues, this is about understanding what type of Los Angeles we are, and that's what the 8.7 miles represents to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alakhan.
Councilmembers, did you ever, ever ask yourself why the Green Line stops two miles before the airport? Did you ever, did you ever, did you ever ask yourself, I, I wasn't asking for an answer, but, thank you, Mr. Labange, for that answer. You just ruined my whole presentation. No, but, you have to wonder why, why the Green Line doesn't go to the Norwalk Station, where other metro links come together. A project that was ultimately fully, fully funded stopped short. So this discussion here reminds me of what happened at the Green Line. Some people complained, they had influence, they stopped the project. Millions of people since have asked, what were they thinking? That's exactly what's gonna happen to millions of people on the rapid bus line, when they say, "Why didn't they extend this one more mile? Why didn't they add the full, fully funded program? Why in the world would you ask for, submit an application asking for 8.7 miles and then say, 'Oh, we changed our mind, federal government. We really don't want that much money, because we only want to do 7.7 or 5.4 miles.'" I don't want this to become a Green Line experience, where 20 years down the road, we're asking ourselves why we didn't finish the project. That's, that's what this is about. And, and I want to emphasize, reemphasize, and I, of course, said this in committee, and that's why Mr. Parks and I have come together on this, because we applied for this. We, we already made the decision to do this, and now we're going back and saying, "No, we don't want to do that." I, I, I think that's, it's a very bad precedent to set. I have to admit, there is some strategic benefit to, to the 7.7 argument, only because the MTA Board shirked its responsibility. They should have voted for 8.7, but they didn't, politically influenced, again, as, as we can be sometimes. I believe that the 8.7-mile route is justified. The one mile that would be excluded, I went back and checked, Mr. Corretts, because in, in committee, you said it would add no benefit. It adds the same proportional benefit in reducing, excuse me, in increasing ridership that any other segment of the line would provide. It is a good part to this puzzle. We knew that Santa Monica wasn't involved when we applied. We knew Beverly Hills was not involved when we applied. If that was the critical criteria, we shouldn't have applied. But the fact is, we did, because there was a decision of the council and the mayor that it was the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do today. Let's finish the project. Let's not create a rapid bus to nowhere.
Thank you, Mr. Alakhan. Mr. Corretts for the second time.
Well, I've heard a lot of rhetoric. Most of it has nothing to do with the segment that I'm talking about. There was a comment by Mr. Parks, that we shouldn't be concerned about cars, we should only be focused about buses, because we're trying to improve transit. And I'm a big fan of transit, to some degree, I agree with that. The question is, to what extreme do you take it? There is a credible study that shows that this would only add a few seconds in savings. Will that get a single bus rider, a single additional bus rider to take this route? I think there's no credible argument to the contrary, that saving six seconds, as one, one element of a study has said, will bring you any new riders. Mr. Reyes has said he took long routes to get to UCLA. Well, when you, when you look at a, when you look at a mile, an hour and a half or two-hour trip, shortening it by a few seconds, would that may have made any difference to you? The answer is no. It was argued that you can compare this to the Green Line. It's been argued that you can compare this to the Green Line, which devastates the whole concept of a trip to the airport, because there's a huge gap. Here, you're talking about adding six seconds to a trip, but causing a lot of trouble in the offset. And what you're risking is the whole project, which could be delayed and could be fouled up and could never go forward. So for that six seconds, is it really worth it? What is the advantage? You're causing a lot of harm to the area, you're potentially endangering the project, and you're picking up a few seconds. How does that make any sense? Unless your desire is to be able to say, "Well, I stood up to those people on the West Side, and I went after them and took them on." Well, there's nothing I can say to that, but if you're really just looking at the project itself, what do you gain by it? What could you potentially lose by it? It looks like a pretty clear question to me. If you're choosing between the eight and the seven, what do you lose? You don't lose any riders, you don't lose any time to speak of, and you're more sure that you get your project.
Thank you, Mr. Weston, for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Explain to me, this has to be a joint agreement. I mean, is there any way around that?
As it stands now, Councilman, it must be a joint agreement. Actually, City Council has full discretion to approve or disapprove a bus lane throughout the entire city. What makes this unique is there is federal funding at stake, which MTA is seeking to secure. That's why we need the approval of the MTA Board, the Board of Supervisors separately, and the City Council. But as a general proposition, Council has the authority and power to approve or disapprove bus lanes in the city.
Okay. Now, walk me through the timeline in the event that we were to, to vote on something that's different, that, that has already been voted on by the MTA. And does the Board of Supervisors have a separate vote on this as well?
They, they will. An Alternative A, an Alternative A1 include a portion of the county right around the 405. So for those two alternatives, the county also needs to take an action. If City Council approves a different recommendation than Metro has approved, which was Alternative A1, is what Metro approved, we would take that back to the Metro Board meeting next week, informing them of City Council's action. At that time, the Metro Board could agree with City Council or it could not agree with City Council.
How realistic is that, that they would agree with City Council? How realistic is that, that they would agree with City Council, given the fact that five of those members, as Mr. LeBonde stated earlier, are members of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first part of your question.
Do you think they will do what we tell them to do?
I think, I think they will.
No, just answer it. What do you think? What do you really think? I mean, what do you think?
I think they're already on record approving Alternative A1.
Ah-ha, that's, that's what I think. So this is the question for us. If we can't partner, how much money is lost?
23.3 million.
Which creates jobs and things of that. I, I agree with Mr. Alarcon, I agree with Mr. Parks. I would, in a heartbeat, support the 8.7. And again, like Mr. Rosen, Rosendahl said earlier, go all the way to the beach, make it right. But the reality of the situation is, there's $23 million on the table, and if we, if we want to be practical, I think that we really need to think about ensuring that we at least get the 23 million so that we can begin this process to upgrade the Wilshire Boulevard. I think that it is not in our best interest not to at least move forward on that. Our dear friend and colleague, Mr. Weezer, indicated that when this was voted on at the MTA, it was voted on unanimously. Okay? And I, I'm not big into symbolism, so I don't want to do something that's just symbolic. But if we can vote on something that's going to guarantee $23 million worth of improvements, I think that that's what the other entities want that we have to partner with, and I believe that it is in our best interest to move forward and vote for that. So that's where, where I will be today, and I would suggest that we all objectively consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Mr. Reyes for the second time.
I appreciate the dialogue that we are going through, but FTA did not say definitively that we don't do the 7.7, we go with 8.7, we're going to lose the money. That has not been stated in any record, right?
That we do not, that's correct.
So right now, the fact is, we can still push 8.7, and we're still not going to definitively lose the 23 million.
Staff, that's correct. Staff has developed all alternatives, as far as we know, that comply with federal requirements.
This is staff interpretation.
That's correct.
Emphasizing that if you don't do 7.7, we might lose the 23 million, but it's not definitive.
FTA will make its final determination after City Council and Metro make a decision. So there, there's no guarantee of, of an outcome until City Council and the Metro Board have made the same decision and the project has been ready to go into FTA approval. That's, that's correct.
So from my point of view, colleagues, we have a large portion of our population who is suffering because of the economic conditions of our city. We have an opportunity to build a line that is much more comprehensive. The one mile does make a difference. And Councilmember Corretts, I went straight down Wilshire, I didn't take a long circuitous route, I didn't take the kind of route that make it last longer, it wasn't like that at all. I went straight from point A to point B, with thousands and thousands of other people who are right now trying to find a way to get to a job much more efficiently that will help your constituents. These are folks that will get to clean the houses, tend the yards, and do all the good things to improve and increase quality of life for everybody. Everybody wins here. It's not the West Side versus the East Side, not the East Side or the West Side, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with one city trying to assess our options. Right now, I'm hearing, we do not lose the 23 million if we push for 8.7. And there's still a lot that can happen between now and the board meeting as well. So I just want to make sure we understand that's not as definitive as is being stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde for another question.
I just want to say other things too. If, if the 720 comes out Wilshire and goes left at Santa Monica, we just spend multi-millions improving Santa Monica, can get you right in. I think there's alternatives in the future that we should look at all streets. Big traffic on big streets, make them accommodate in the buses. The problem on Santa Monica Boulevard is we did approve Santa Monica Boulevard through the heart of Westwood, but when we got to the 405, it still was the same width in the sessions. You gotta get the pitch points out. I just think what Mr. Weston said is right. I understand that, Herb. I understand why the county has to see it, because, believe it or not, there's an undercorporate county. If, if, if the VA was in the city, it wouldn't have to go before the county, correct? The VA property's in the city, so that's why it goes there. So all these efforts, and I, and I, Richard, what you said is right, mistakes are. My understanding of history it was, is then the commission that ran the airport under Mr. Bradley didn't want it to dictate the master plan for the airport. Also, forgive me for mispronouncing, Jackie Backrack from the South Bay was on the RTD Board, it's before the MTA. It was before the Berlin Wall fall, there was a lot of jobs down in the South Bay, they wanted to go there. It is a mistake, but now we have to do that. This, on this situation here, is not a mistake to exempt the section that has been widened more than any other part of Wilshire due to the development of, of the condo, what you call Condo Canyon, or I think there's a better name for it, because it's always going to create significant bump outs. If I thought it would, and I've worked with some of the people, the Bus Riders Union, we know we're not always on the same page over the time, the 7.1s gets us a lot better down the road than not at all. Because I, as I said, Mr. Weston and I would take today, go right out to San Vicente and just get that part of Wilshire, but this does connect the city in such a way. So I just would support 1A, and that's the best way to go today as we go forward, and many things that we have to do. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon for the second time.
I, I don't know where the votes are going. I, I would hope that we would get as much out of this as possible, but is there a way, Mr. Weston, that we might craft something that would send both the message that the City of Los Angeles supports the 8.7, but to expedite also allows for an option where if they do the 7.7, we would support that as well? The notion is that we send, that we, we vote in favor of 8.7, but we also suggest that we would, we also vote in favor of 7.7 and leave, and let the county know that we want 8.7, but it's their decision if they will not acquiesce to that.
We could, we could go, we could take that money, just to let you know, and go, would you want to go from MacArthur Park down through downtown and wide Wilshire?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
No.
He's walked on one of my speeches, I will not allow it a second time. Mr. Weston, the question.
I'd like to hear from the representatives from the districts, what they think. I might be open, but I'd like to hear what.
Well, they want 5.4.
I would like to listen to the representatives that oversee that area, see what they think about the suggestion that you made, because I think that, I think there could be some merit in what you said.
I was tracking your arguments that we have to be concerned about the, the MTA's decision and what the county is likely to do. And if they voted for 7.7, there is a compelling argument that they would vote for 7.7 again, but, but in no case did, is there any reason to go to 5.4?
So let me, so I would like to take the temperature of Mr. Corretts and Mr. Rosendahl. 98.6?
It's difficult for me because I, I still can't make a whole lot of sense to the opposition. We're hearing a lot of conversation about getting people from the East Side quicker to their, their jobs on the West Side, but you're talking about six seconds quicker. What's the advantage? I don't see, I don't see why people are still arguing for this 8.7 when studies show that it doesn't save any time. So why, why are we so insistent on including that stretch? It doesn't make any sense for me, so it's difficult for me to vote for that.
Members on my time, I would like to move that we support both the 8.7 and 7.7, but urge the MTA to support 8.7.
Mr. Parks.
Let me, thank you, Mr. President. Richard, I think that proposal is exactly why we're here today, is that had people stood their ground on 8.7, we wouldn't have had this compromise. And I think the dilemma we have is that when we look at the ridership, that's where we should be going. The other thing, I think, just as Mr. Reyes, as questions were answered, we found out that this drop dead date wasn't necessarily a drop dead date. There is time to work this out. The other thing I think we have to realize, the fact that MTA voted first doesn't mean it's the best plan. They knew clearly in voting for this that everybody had to agree with them, so they voted first. And so the fact is, without our input as a city, which I think most of this is in the city, they didn't ask for that issue. And so I would make a motion that we support singularly the 8.7 so that we can get the best line for the people in the City of Los Angeles that ride through the City of Los Angeles and give them the best effort as it relates to MTA services for this region, not just the compromise that then gets voted on quickly, knowing everybody had to agree with one body. Our input was not necessarily there as a council. We owe it to our, that people we represent. I have people that live all the way in the south end of 8th District that find their way down Wilshire Boulevard to go work on the West Side. They have the same concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Weezer.
I just wanted to clarify Mr. Motion, the motion made by Mr. Alarcon, but you seconded Mr. Parks, Alarcon, so did you withdraw your motion, or is that on the table? Okay. Well, let me ask Metro staff then, Mr. Alarcon made a motion that says we support both, but I think, what was the clerk, what was the motion? Mr. Alarcon's motion?
Councilmember Alarcon's motion was support both 8.7 and 7.7, and to urge MTA to support 8.7.
Okay. When you go back and you write up your report, what will you say?
Well, I will try and capture your motion as clearly as I can and present what was sent here today, but I think, I think there would be confusion as to what the city is picking as a project, and I think that confusion would be beyond the MTA Board, but would also be with FTA. I'm not sure FTA would be satisfied that City Council has actually selected a project. They would have narrowed it down to several.
Essentially, what it's doing is taking out one option, which is a 5.3, but, but you would leave it up to the Metro in that motion, right?
I think the, the question for the Council today is to actually adopt a specific project under the environmental process. If the Council concurs with the MTA Board, you're essentially ratifying the findings of fact, the statement of overriding considerations, the mitigation. If you disagree with the MTA Board and you go with either Option A or A2, you're then directing DOT to work with MTA and requesting MTA to develop new findings of fact, new statements of overriding consideration, and a new mitigation plan. So I think procedurally, the Council needs to ratify one of the three alternatives.
I think that's a clear direction. Whatever we do, folks, I think we should identify one path, whether it's the 8.7 or the 7.7, but to do Mr. Alarcon's motion just creates a lot of confusion. And our interim Department Transportation General Manager?
Yes.
Have you been today?
I think I'm next on number nine.
Oh, okay.
Depends how this goes.
Our interim General Manager for Department Transportation, if he is so selected, he'll be peroned in the next vote. He, he also mentioned that technically that we would have to make some other adjustments on the overriding considerations, et cetera, we give two options. So we just have to select one path, ladies and gentlemen.
And I can also add that if the Council does decide to go with Option A1 or A2, you could request MTA to continue studying the extension of the bus lanes in either case. So.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Well, in, in light of the complexity that would be and the possible delay and the additional study that would be required if we approve, if we approve both of these, I would suggest approving the 7.7, but with an additional recommendation that the 8.7 be pursued at the earliest possible date, or some language to suggest that that is the intention of this Council to move forward with that. But today, we're approving 7.7, and that's the proposal that we want to go forward. So, Mr. Alarcon, I would suggest that as a, I, I don't know how we word that exactly, but I would suggest that as a friendly amendment to your, to your motion.
It's hardly ever exactly as I said it after you say it, but that's exactly what I said.
Okay, that's, the Alarcon Amendment has proposed and amended, but proposed originally. So, Mr.
Just for purposes of clarification, my motion was to request that the MTA reconsider its decision regarding the 7.7 and support 8.7, which we would support, and at the same time approving the 7.7 so that if they decide not to, they can move forward with the 7.7 without coming back to us. If they did approve the 8.7, they would have to come back to Council for, for concurrence. But, and, but we, we would have a clear path that would be, that would allow us to be timely.
Mr. Rosendahl for the third time.
Yeah, it's hard to speak at this point about anything other than let's do the 15, let's do the 5.3, let's do the 7.7, and let's do the 8.7. Look, the MTA's been around a long time, a lot of big shots have been sitting on there, we have gridlocked like crazy. Thank you for your leadership over the last 30 years in putting together a mass transit plan. Let's start with that as a backdrop. Secondly, my piece, and I'm only talking about federal to Centinela, of course I want to go to the VA, of course I want to go to UCLA, and I also want to go to Santa Monica. But you know, my job is, is a learning process. I learn every day. And I can't understand how the leadership of MTA did not sit down with Santa Monica, which creates all of my issues. I have 200,000 cars coming through my district to go to work there every day, and if you ever want to come with me, I'll take you to my little piece of Centinela to federal. And we'll walk faster than the cars. This is going to even make it worse for the buses and for the cars unless Santa Monica is joining the team. So I can't deal with the past, I can just deal with the moment and deal with the future. So my message to MTA is get your act together, stop playing at politics, and let's do the right route, which is from the ocean to downtown. Let's bring Santa Monica in the room and make it happen, period. And as for this federal money, this federal government is so dysfunctional back there that I don't want to rely on their energy to determine anything here locally. I think we, the local people, should make those decisions. And to say the money is in jeopardy, that is just a big line, okay? That money's been in jeopardy for 11 years or 10 years. If we had our act together as a region, we wouldn't be in this situation, and we seem to not be able to do that. So poetic justice would be the nine point or the eight point something, because the moment they pulled out that piece over there on the other side of the 405, what did it do to my folks? They said, well, great, fragment it, keep fragmenting it. Of course, there was no leadership on the MTA Board that frankly got up and said, look, we either go for the whole enchilada and make it from the ocean to downtown. They had many conversations, they sit in many meetings for many years. So the whole thing is dysfunctional at this point, but the votes are there for either the 8.7, or the that, whatever. But for God's sake, in the future, let's learn from these mistakes, and let's get ourselves out of this gridlock by having regional plans that involve everybody. There's been no decent traffic study from the 405 to the Santa Monica border, that's all BS, what I've heard about that. No one's counted who's on the buses, where these people are going on the buses, or anything like that. So, you know, I'm a one-man vote here, but I'm going to stay strong. I think the whole thing is dysfunctional. I would rather you go with the 5.4 and start playing politics back and forth anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts for the third time. Mr. Corretts.
Now, I don't think I have that much to add. I'm open to whatever compromise has worked out between the two motions, Alarcon and Krikorian. I think we're, we're closer to something that can work for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes for the third time.
I'm just hoping we can get to that sense of addressing everyone's needs as much as we can. I do know the bicyclists voiced in this presentation that everything we add as far as a bus lane goes does enhance their safety, their capacity to move. We've embraced Eclavilla, we've done so much with the Bicycle Coalition, we should be consistent in that regard as well. Thank you.
Mr. LeBonde for the third time.
Thank you. I wish we had technology. I wish we had technology that we could put on that big screen up there and show the width of the street from the city limits near Comstock through Westwood. Because over the years, people who sat in this chair demanded street widening. It's the widest street in Los Angeles, Wilshire Boulevard from Comstock to Wilshire. So I agree with So I agree with Mr. Coretts. I understand the concept, but I also want to say to the MTA, number one line in the city is Wilshire Boulevard, correct? Number one and two, north and south, is Western and Vermont. We spent $4 billion on a subway system. So if we really were smart, we would say what we should do is have these lines, the 720, come in and out every minute from Western and Wilshire to get to the west side faster, so people could get on the subway and get to Western and bypass all that. Jump on the subway, get there. Are we thinking in any of those directions? Because the thing about a subway system, a transit system, is like a bicycle wheel. It's a hub right in the middle and spokes. And we're not hub and spoken. We're, we're not a hub and spoke, excuse me for that mispronunciation. We have to have a hub and a spoke. So I, I just think if we want to be successful to move people, and it's not just to work, it's to get them home, so they can get with their families, it's that transition, we got to hub and spoke more. Because this line, the 720, starts in Commerce, and it goes through narrow streets of downtown Los Angeles, and it doesn't go through the Sturgis Tunnel, because we didn't widen it this city council back when the CRA started in the 60s. All these decisions do have an impact. So the way to solve this is to try to hub and spoke it more, so that people do. Today, though, the way to solve this application is the Port foot 71. And I really believe, we are building, whatever the lines they are, orange lines, red lines, gold line, extend the line downtown to the art district. Mr. Weezer, you're on the board, you can do that. Get a car, go there, connect it. Use the existing system to feed the buses. That's how people get by faster, because we've made these mistakes before. But I want technology, Madam City Clerk, and you're a great city clerk right there, I appreciate what you do, to get us the ITA there to show us the width of the street, so we can make a decision that sees why that area is excluded. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Mr. Alarcon, I think where we are, if I can just restate where I think the motion was with my friendly amendment then. The proposal would be that we would approve A1, the 7.7 mile extension, and in addition, we would request that the MTA reconsider their position on the 8.7, the full length as well. Is that, is that what we were both saying?
I would approve it and then ask them to reconsider.
No, reconsider their previous position on the 8.7.
Mine was to support, to indicate that we would support 8.7. That's the one piece you didn't.
So for the MTA, just so that we're clear, we will approve the 7.7, and we will request that the MTA further consider a support position of the 8.7.
Well, not that we ask them to reconsider it, but that they support it. In other words, we, we support 8.7, and we hope that they will reconsider and support 8.7. But in the meantime, we're supporting 7.7 should they decide not to. And, you know, let, I, I agree with Mr. Parks that there, and that's why I seconded his motion also. If this council wants to go the 8.7 route, you know, we can, we can do that too. And the MTA has told me that they could come back in time if the MTA makes a decision on 8.7 in response to our motion. But if they come back with 7.7, I would also assume that they could come back to us in, in a reasonable time. But if your concern is saving time, then I offered my motion.
Mr. Krikorian, are you finished? Mr. Krikorian?
I'm, I'm finished arguing. I'm just not sure if we have clarity on what it is that we're about to vote.
There's two more speakers, so come back to you. Mr. Reyes for the fourth time.
Perhaps one word that we, we could inject is that this council prefers 8.7, but we support 7 points, the alternative, but we would prefer 8.7. That is our priority, that's our preference. We're being told by staff, if we do that, we're going to jeopardize $23 million. That's what we don't want to do. So I just want to put that out there as we go through this discussion. My second point was going to be that whatever motion prevails, that we, if we can get a report back, I'm asking staff, given the issues raised by Councilman Rosendorf, this between federal and going west in his district, why can't we get an analysis that speaks to the issues he raised? Who is traveling on that route? Where are they emerging from? Where are their destinations? And what's the impact? That perhaps we can get Santa Monica to understand. We can have, get Santa Monica, so that's either an amendment or a, or separate motion.
And I'll second it.
But that way, we can have sufficient data that is technical in nature, that requires or at least stimulates some response from Santa Monica.
A council member, I'm Mike Nagel, I'm general counsel for the Department of Transportation in the City Attorney's Office. I think what you're trying to do, and the way this should be worded, you're trying to urge the County Board of Supervisors to reconsider and do 8.7. But today, you're approving the 7.7 miles. You want to make the distinction based on legal reasons. You want to be firmly saying you're supporting, or you're approving the 7.7 so it can go forward, and you don't lose that federal funding. At the same time, you're urging them to reconsider the 8.7. That, that's appropriate, you can do that. And it needs to be worded that way, so that there, you're not, it doesn't look like you're approving both, so there's, that the federal government can make the distinction. Yes, the city council approved the 7.7, but urged that the County Board of Supervisors reconsider and the 8.7.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Labange.
I support the Nagel amendment right there, as discussed, right there.
Point of clarification, Mr. Alarcon.
You said the, you said the Board of Supervisors instead of the MTA. I just want to make clarification, you're talking about the MTA Board.
The Board of Supervisors. Good evening, Mr. Nagel, come here, real quick. Just right here, just make it easy instead of stepping back, just repeat it. Just repeat it.
Yes.
On the issue.
What you want is, you just want to make sure it's clear on the record that you're approving the 7.7 extension, but you're urging the Board to reconsider and go with 8.7 if, if they reconsider that.
Yes.
The Metro Board, yes.
That's my motion, I asked for a second.
Yeah, that's very, thank you, Mr. Labange, that was.
I'll second it. Whichever it is, let's vote. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas for the first time.
Yeah, for, for more clarity, I, I think what the city attorney was talking about when he said the supervisors, what he meant was the MTA Board. Even though all five supervisors get to sit on that board, it is a body of, of more individuals, including appointments from the city of Los Angeles as well. But I just wanted to make sure that, that a lot has been said in this discussion and other matters today about how bad politics is or what have you, but the bottom line is, anything short of 8.7, in my opinion, is in fact including way too much politics in this decision. Because as it was said earlier, the real perspective that should be considered here is those men and women and children who are actually taking the bus, public transportation. And as was mentioned earlier, I think by Councilmember Parks, that many of these individuals don't have the luxury, like many of us, to decide, do I take the bus because I feel like it, or do I take the bus because I have no other alternative to speak of to get to and from work, especially when I want to travel, traverse from the east side of town to the west side of town, which Wilshire Boulevard actually provides that, that travel and that transportation. So one of the things I want to make sure that people understand, it's not lost on me, it's my opinion that the people who have the least voice in this whole thing are the people who clean homes. The people who have the least voice in this whole thing and the least amount of clout are the people who actually change diapers for people all day long when they're going to the west side, and those are the individuals who have the least amount of clout in this whole discussion. And if we listen to them, I think they would be wholeheartedly, city of Los Angeles, do the 8.7. City of Los Angeles, pass resolutions asking, demanding, begging Beverly Hills, Santa Monica to continue to do more for public transportation throughout those corridors. That's what I think those individuals would be saying. And unfortunately, most of them would be saying it in Spanish and not English. But the bottom line is, those are the people that we should be thinking of serving right now. Not so much the people who are complaining about a little bit more time here, a little bit more time there in their automobiles. We should be thinking about the people who actually depend on public transportation. That's why federal dollars are used, because it's public transportation. That's why, that's why we have a regional transportation board made up of council members and appointments from different cities, and also supervisors, all these individuals, because we're supposed to be thinking regionally about what's best for the region, not just what's best for a particular constituency, because they can pick up the phone and some of them can actually get the President of the United States on the line. People in Reyes's district can't get the President on the line. The President doesn't have fundraisers in Councilman Reyes's district, or mine, or Weezer's district, or maybe downtown he might. But when it comes to the west side, that's where the people have a lot of political clout. So when people say politics is out of this, that's not true. Politics has everything to do with anything less than 8.7.
Thank you. That does conclude today's speaker queue. We have received a vote for clarification. Mr. Reyes, your request was not a motion, it was just a request for a report back separately? All right. So next, the first motion we're voting on is Mr. Parks. That is a substitute motion, Mr. Parks. The substitute motion. And for clarification, that's only on the 8.7, is that correct? Okay. Everyone clear? Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Parks, seconded by Mr. Alarcon, to support singularly 8.7 miles.
Order of order.
If I'm not mistaken, wouldn't Mr. Alarcon's motion be the first motion to be voted upon since it was the last made?
We, we, actually.
Before his.
Yeah. Mr. Parks was the last one made, and also it's less restrictive than the Alarcon motion, so it's better we take it in that sequence.
No, mine was a friendly amendment to Mr. Alarcon's. Okay, thank you.
So that would be the motion, Mr. Parks's motion, everyone clear? Okay, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
That fails. Now, Mr. Alarcon's motion, as amended numerous times. Everyone clear on Mr. Alarcon's motion? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, that passes, and that is a substitute motion that concludes that issue. Next item. Order.
Can the clerk read that last motion that just passed, please, for the audience to be aware of what exactly happened? Thank you.
The motion was to approve A point, alternative A1, the 7.7 mile extension, and to urge the MTA Board to support the 8.7 mile extension.
Mr. Dela Vega?
Yeah, just a point of clarification for the clerk's record, I think that part of the council action needs to incorporate the actual language in the agenda from item 22A. There's some technical language there related to the SEQA and NEPA process, if that.
Is there a motion to include those recommendations? Mr. Alarcon moves that we include, I'm going to, yeah, we already closed the matter, so first of all, Mr. Alarcon moves to reopen the item. Seem no objection? The item is reopened now. Yeah.
Just for clarity.
Would you please restate?
Yeah, yeah, my recommendation is the portion of the council motion related to supporting the 7.7 miles should use the language in the council agenda for item 22, part A.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Alarcon, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Cardenas. Okay, please open the roll.
A1, with the agenda language is listed as 22, section A.
Okay, we clear? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay, that amended is passed, now we are concluded with this item. Next item, please.
Mr. Smith, if we haven't done it already, I just wanted to congratulate and welcome Mr. Dela Vega for his new position and doing this more often. Congratulations.
Thank you. You haven't voted yet.
Yeah. That's the public comment. Okay. All right, we're going to go to public comment, ladies and gentlemen. We thank all those in the audience who have here for public comment for waiting. First public comment will be Daniel Wright. Daniel Wright?
Daniel Wright, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition. First, our coalition of nearly 70 national, regional, and local community-based and civil rights organizations thank this council for asserting jurisdiction over the Recreation of Parks May 20th approval of an expansion of exhibition space in the Autry's Griffith Park building. This project is intended to relocate the signature exhibits of the Southwest Museum from Mount Washington to Griffith Park. On Friday, June 3rd, the Arts Parks Committee conducted Part 1 of a public hearing where over 50 people showed up on only 24 hours' notice to explain to your committee how the Autry's project violates and is inconsistent with this city's fundamental organic law, the general plan. Autry applied for a state grant to pay for a project it knew violated the general plan. This was intentional. It unfairly puts you, the city council, in having to choose between Autry's $6.6 million tentative grant from the state or confirming, conforming the project to the general plan that provides that the city of Los Angeles will only pursue actions that, quote, "maintain the Southwest Museum on Mount Washington." The policy was enacted by this council in the 1990s when the Board of the Southwest Museum tried to move the city out of, move the museum out of the city. You should understand that Councilmember Weezer has tried to work with the Autry Board to bring Autry into conformity with the general plan. The city officials offered Autry $25 million in low-interest loans to rehabilitate the Southwest Museum for continued use, and the city offered Autry support if it applied for a Prop 84 grant for the Southwest Museum site. The Autry Board turned down the city's generous assistance and instead applied for Prop 84 funding for the project in Griffith Park. At a recent hearing, Councilmember Reyes asked Autry officials, what are their plans for the Southwest Museum and the Casa de Adobe in his district? The response? Autry's CEO asked the city attorney if he had to answer that question, and he refused to answer those questions. You, council members, need an answer to Mr. Reyes's questions. Thank you.
In Van Nuys, Donna Pyramid, excuse me, Mr. Coretts? Item 22, forthwith. In Van Nuys, Donna Pyramid. Nobody there. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-A-L-A-N-D-S.org. There's a new post up there about a week ago. You know, is this city racially polarized? We just had a vote after three hours. It was seven to five in favor of Bernie Parks. Only one minority voted against Parks. This is a, this is a racially charged city. There's only right now just three of, one, two, three, four members of, of the Board, five members listening. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to become the first city in the history of the world to open a 24-hour nightclub called Reflection at Second and Maiden inside a LAPD facility, the headquarters, the city headquarters. I know people think it's psychotic that I'm making it up. It's happening, and it's happening now, and we want an investigation of the people who are behind it, who own the nightclub. And I'm telling you right now, it is insane, and it, I'm going to Al Jazeera and point out to Al Jazeera that we're talking about a very, very serious security problem. We don't have enough security. It is 10 times easier to get into LAPD headquarters than it is to get into here. You don't have to show any ID, you don't have to show anything to get into LAPD headquarters. Here, you treat us like we're terrorists. Everybody has to show ID to get in here. I'd like to point out right now, Hollywood Highlands... I'd like to point out right now, HollywoodHighlands.org, and I'm just telling you no thanks. And I just want you to know, I know that trick, it's poison. I just want to point out right now that the gold card problem, the gold card fiasco, many reporters and editors at the LA Times have, have had their tickets fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
I don't need any water. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serena, Northeast LA, also a member of the Friends of Southwest Museum and LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board. We're troubled. We don't know what's going on in the Arts and Parks Committee. There was some discussion as to attorneys and such like that. We don't know what's going on next week. We hear there's going to be an appeals hearing, but what's happened to the 245 action? We don't know. We do know some things. We know that there's only really one land lease agreement, and we also know that the Autry National Center claims in some of their tax forms that they receive an equivalent of $10 million a year donation from the City of Los Angeles for the $1 land of 11 acres in Griffith Park. So we're kind of confused. We only have one land lease agreement. This stipulates many terms and conditions which appear not to have been complied with. We have the Autry National Center coming back for a Griffith Park modification, and some people say, "Well, it's $25,000 and $5,000 limits on it." Well, that's not in the land lease agreement, so we're confused as to which page are we on, boys? Because we don't seem to have the same page that other people has, but this is supposed to be public record. And when Autry is claiming $10 million equivalent donation from the City of Los Angeles for Griffith Park land, it seems that in these times, we're just talking about $20 million, how about $10 million a year? So it seems that we need more information about what's going on on the 245 and the appeal next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Anchor Patel.
That whole Wilshire Bus Rapid Transit thing was a little symbolic, I think, wasn't it? Symbolic of our politics in Los Angeles, in the country, the grandstanding. We turned it into a racial issue, as some of us did. Some of the minorities, some of the people that ride the bus don't have the opportunity to make their points this way and that way, and that's throughout the whole system, right? We have a couple of people who pay attention, some of which include our elected officials, not necessarily all the time, some of which include the lobbyists, not necessarily all the time, and rarely do the constituents actually pay attention to things like the City Treasurer's Investment and Cash Management Report, which I, you know, this is one of those things that I always like to bring up, because it's a $6 billion document that has nothing to do with pensions. It's money that the city invests into McDonald's and Nike and Coca-Cola, hundreds of millions of dollars. We're receiving 1% and 2% and 3%, and it's a $6 billion document, and nobody bats an eye. How is that possible, right? A lot of people come in here and talk about the city being bankrupt. There's a $6 billion that are being invested in Coca-Cola, Nike, McDonald's, and the list can go on and on about Citigroup and all these other bonds and derivatives and mortgage-backed securities, and nobody knows who's responsible for that money and where it goes to, but it's, it's $6 billion, and this is indicative of CalPERS, right? California Public Employee Retirement System. There's $200 billion there, $200 billion. Wall Street sees it, they go after it, they lobby for it. Apollo Company comes out in the news on a regular basis saying, "Yeah, they paid some of those board members to invest that money in questionable assets." This is, this is common knowledge to those of us that pay attention, and unfortunately, that just isn't so many of us. And so many of our elected officials don't pay attention to this kind of stuff either, and that's the problem, isn't it?
Thank you. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. My name is Zuma Dog, and you can read everything I'm talking about at lacitynews.com. I myself with Matt Dowd sued your ass in federal court, and we won. Thank you! Now, I'd like some people to know, in case you're watching at home, this place is crawling with FBI agents, you know? I had to wait so long in line because there were so many FBI agents waiting to get in. I almost missed my public comment. So just so the people know, here's what happens with that Tony of Viragosa. Capital Equity firms backed him when he ran for mayor. They put money into his campaign. He won. What's the first thing he did? He took those Capital Equity people and placed them as commissioners on LASERS, on CRA, Cultural Affairs, all through the city. Then what happens is those pension commissioners who backed Viragosa through campaign funds, they are now sitting on the LASER Board that he appointed them to. They take the money and vote to give it to the CRA projects, and those commissioners, also appointed by Viragosa, and then you can take it to Building and Safety FBI investigation, the DOT FBI investigation, the Housing Authority being investigated. And I'm here to say, too, investigations that you're not aware of is into the pension funds in the State of California. If you know Elliot Brody and never even were in the room with him, you better be pretty nervous, and that goes for some other people. So you're going to see people taken away in handcuffs over the pension fund. What happened was, 20% of the city's pension fund, billions of dollars, were lost in the stock market through alternative investments. And I just spoke with Tony Perez, and I said, "Gee, how's it going?" As the stock market does go, the city's general fund treasury, he said, "Zuma Dog, you know that." So as goes Wall Street, goes the general fund. It's directly tied, and it was given away through phony alternative investments to Viragosa's cronies. Hello, FBI!
Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, and doesn't 30 days go quick? It's even been more than 30 days, but so glad Greg Smith's winding out his time. He gets the hell out of the city council. We can't wait to see the back of him and some of these other council members. We just had witness of Tom LeBond. He's got to be the dumbest, most inept, pathetic councilman in the city.
Mr. LeBond.
He just admitted, excuse me, I'm talking here.
Mr. Dowd, you know, not to direct comments to the individual members.
About how dumb he is. It's legal, you can check with the city attorney before you open your big trap, all right? We've got it from the Ninth Circuit. You're not allowed to interfere with my public comment. It's called Norse. The guy spent 20 minutes getting everyone to explain to him what you were voting on here, and it's in his district. It's dumb. He's the worst. And that's why I said what I said the other time. You just proved it here. You don't even know what you're doing. You're arguing over a stupid mile of a bus lane when you overdeveloped all that area. That's why all the people are there, because you sold them all the condos and said, "Come drive in, beautiful West LA." And now you're doing a backflip. Oh, we want to help all the people on the bus, all the illegal people who want to get out to Santa Monica and travel through his dumb district, all the food trucks down there on Wilshire. It's a nightmare. I don't know how he got elected. At least, finally, the guy is sitting there and letting me say what I'm allowed to say. Thank you, Tony Cardenas. Look up Norse versus the city, Norse versus City of Santa Cruz. The Ninth Circuit's ruled, if I think you're fucking inept, I can say it, and there's no reason for anyone to say otherwise.
Okay, that's all, sir. You're done. Out. Please, please take him out. You violated the council rules, you know better. Please escort him out.
Mr. Smith.
Jared Wright, next speaker.
Mr. Smith, for the record, Mr. Dog and Mr. Dowd have disrupted the meeting with their language and with their conduct.
This is a repeated, so this is a 30-day expulsion? This is a 30-day expulsion? And notify your friend, Mr. Dog, that he also committed a violation as he exited. Mr. Wright, please excuse the confusion.
I've been waiting a long, long time, so I don't, I can wait a couple extra seconds. Thank you, Council President, distinguished council members. Just want to bring, I'm Transportation Committee Co-Chair of Angeles Chapter of Sierra Club. Just want to bring to your attention some issues related to an item that is currently under discussion, under planning, under, possibly under construction, depending on how the NFL feels about, and that's the Farmersville Event Center. There's a wonderful opportunity to, for the City of Los Angeles to be proactive in, of advocating for transportation alternatives and transportation investment related to that event center. They're looking at, you know, doing this event center, but right now there's no look at the transportation components in terms of looking at ways to improve the facilities at the Pico Metro Rail Station, not looking at bike improvements, streetscape improvements, bus-only lane improvements surrounding that area, so that people will have an alternative to reach this event center, or even if the event center is not built, to get to Staples Center and LA Live without using their cars. This, we spent a good, good chunk of time about transportation investment in terms of mobility and who gets that mobility, who receives that mobility, and this is a related item and a related component that I think the city council needs to look at with vested interest into looking at, in looking at those improvements and looking at those transportation components from expanding a light rail station to streetscape and the like, and also bring that to our eventual General Manager of LA DOT, Jaime Delavega, whom I know many times at the Metro Board, as also with the Mayor's Office. Just take a good look at this, and, because it's very vital and it's much, much important. So thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Let's take item number nine. Mr. Rosendahl is here, he's in the back. Waiting for Mr. Rosendahl to come. All right. Mr. LeBond?
I'd like to introduce Jaime Delavega. Great experience with the city family for many years, former deputy mayor under the Reardon administration, continued throughout the years, appointed as to be the top person for Mayor Viragosa on transit, has an excellent background, and is the person at this time that we should appoint as the interim General Manager for the Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a couple pump of comment cards. I don't see Dr. Williams, is he out here? Matt Dowd is not here. Anchor Patel? Zuma Dog is not here. Mr. Walsh will be next.
I'd like to address Mr. Delavega. Okay, LA DOT has a, public transportation has a general problem in the City of Los Angeles where LA, you clearly went through it today, there is a lack of coordination between MTA, LA DOT, Santa Clarita, Santa Monica Blue Bus, MetroLink, Amtrak, and the list goes on. And CSUN specifically, California State University Northridge, is having a transportation center put on its campus, Vincennes and Darby. It's being done by the MTA, there's money. We would like to somehow plug into, say, the Northridge Dash. There's a lot of potential to work with LA DOT and MTA, put a couple people that can work in the Valley, and that's another problem that we have in public transportation, it's so downtown-centric. There's very little that goes to the Valley. So again, CSUN could become that hub for the Valley. There's a new transportation center, it's going to be built during, starting this summer and next summer, it should be finished, and it's a great opportunity to build some of those networks with maybe even Santa Clarita, who has buses that come up there, stop at CSUN, maybe go through. Another project that I would really like to work with LA DOT on is the Safe Routes to School, right? There's $42 million in grants, Safe Routes to School. If the city's bicycle plan is going to get implemented, it's, it's very likely through this school shed idea, you know, transportation shed, school shed, Safe Routes to School. CSUN has a good geography department, it has a good urban planning department, neighborhood councils are interested in working with this, so are local schools in that area. This is a robust opportunity for collaboration between parents, PTAs, neighborhood councils, students in geography with the GIS technology, urban planners, and then if LA DOT could really come together with this, we have a real opportunity to work on this safe $500,000 grants for each school, and there are dozens. We should be applying for a lot of them, and I really think that there's an opportunity for collaboration, that a lot of people are interested in this, and I would extend my hand to you, and we could work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
My voice has returned. I don't know, it was a miracle. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, 100,000 successful server requests per week. And we are opposed to Jaime Delavega. I remember when Jaime was Chairman of Reardon's for Governor Committee, remember that? Statewide disaster, MTA Board statewide, he was a disaster. Jaime Delavega is in here now for a simple reason. It's to stop Wendy Gruel from getting the names of those who had 1,000 tickets in the past two years fixed by the so-called Gold Card Desk. The Gold Card Desk did not start 20 years ago, it did not start under Bradley, as the mayor said, it started under Richard Reardon. That's where it started. It is going to be an enormous amount of embarrassment because he is going to try to stop the names coming out, just for two years, only two years worth, because a number of reporters in this building got their car, got their tickets fixed. And when the mayor was first told about it, he supported the Gold Card when the, when the, when he heard about it from a news person. The next day, when he saw the big storm, all of a sudden, he got rid of the Gold Card Desk. Where are they? Who were they? We have no idea. But I'm telling you right now, if you want to know the full story of what's happening in Hollywood, or in the City of Los Angeles, or in the State of California, there's only one place to go, HollywoodHighlands.org. Abajo Jaime Delavega.
That concludes the public comment. Mr. LeBond and Mr. Cardenas, you're the speaker on the queue.
I just want them to roll the tape at this moment in time based on my congratulations to Mr. Delavega earlier.
Thank you.
We normally take up these appointments earlier in the meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you over the years, Jaime, and also, as you demonstrated today, you listen very well, you take notes very well, you advise very well, and you know what you're doing. It's interesting that you had an opportunity to do that for about an hour and a half right before your appointment, but I just wanted to say, congratulations and thank you for your service, and it's not always this crazy here. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
As Chair of Transportation, I just want to say that you showed us who you are in what we just went through, and I obviously ask for unanimous support, and we wish you well, and I'm there to work with you, and I look forward to your leadership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speaker queue. Mr. Delavega, would you like to say anything to the council before we vote?
Just simply thank you for having a shorter meeting than the MTA Board of Directors. That was refreshing.
You haven't been around here long enough. That concludes today's speakers. Please open the queue, open the votes, excuse me, close the vote, announce the vote.
Ten ayes.
That passes, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item number, item number 21 is going to be put off calendar. Do we have a date?
Yes. Mr. Chair, we'd like to have it continued to July 13th, which would coincide with the second reading of the ordinance regarding 20.
Thank you. That'll be put off to July 13th. That concludes today's agenda. Do we have any other items?
And let me hit a fourth with on 24.
Fourth with on 24.
Mr. Smith, the second reading of that ordinance, I believe, is the 15th.
Okay, whatever we want to coincide.
We will coordinate that coming back at the same time. Thank you. Next item.
The council has motions for post and referral.
Those are post and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alacon requests to arrive at 10:30 a.m. on June 21st for city business, that meets council policy.
Hey, Mr. Who is it, Cardenas? Was it?
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused on July 13th and 15th, and August 16th, 17th, and 19th for city business, and that meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
That clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Were there any announcements, members? Any announcements?
14th of June.
Thank you very much. Mr. LeBond, Mr. Alacon? Me? Do you have a?
Oh, I just want to announce that tomorrow, June 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Mend, Meet Each Need with Dignity, will have its fourth annual Mending Poverty Conference. Special guest speakers will include Father Greg Boyle and Gene Ross from the California Budget Process, Project, excuse me. So this will be at 10641 San Fernando Road in Pacoima. If you need...
Okay. Any other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Young Act Church. It is a tremendous congregation. Together with the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, we were able to clean out a pedestrian bridge in Lincoln Heights on Avenue 20 in Mozart. It's been essentially neglected for a long time, again, cutbacks and everything else that we are going through, but I would say at least 100, 150 folks came, cleaned up the area, cleaned the neighborhood, painted the bridge, and it's just been a much more positive experience for the kids getting to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kardness.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to announce that on June 15th, tomorrow, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, in the Marvin Browdy Constituent Center in the San Fernando Valley, in the Van Nuys area, the Marvin Browdy Constituent Center on Van Nuys Boulevard is the first meeting of the 2011 rates process for the Department of Water and Power. Again, it's open to the public, and it's going to be a public forum where the public can explain to the Department of Water and Power what their expectations are, and also so the Department of Water and Power can also explain what their process is as well. So an open meeting to the public tomorrow, June 15th, from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, on behalf of the Department of Water and Power at the Marvin Browdy Constituent Center on Van Nuys Boulevard. It's also recognized as the government center in Van Nuys. That's where they're having the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, are there any, Mr. Labonge?
Is that Randy Levin back there? Randy Levin and his vigorous group, welcome to city council right there, the head IDA. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other announcements? Seeing none, are there any adjourning motions? Okay, please, everyone in the audience, please, motions. Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, 10 months ago, you joined me in these chambers honoring Stand Up to Cancer, which is a remarkable effort that unites not just the medical community, but the entire world in promoting cancer research. Of course, that effort takes extraordinary talent, leadership, and effort, and among those who we honored 10 months ago, serving as lead representative of the group, was the main producer of that worldwide televised event, Laura Ziskin, an acclaimed member of the Hollywood community who had lived with breast cancer for seven years and who was a co-founder of that organization. Sadly, Laura passed away two days ago at her home in Santa Monica at the age of 61. She grew up in the San Fernando Valley and graduated from USC School of Cinema and Television and had a tremendous career in the entertainment industry, producing such films as Pretty Woman, As Good As It Gets, and the Spider-Man movies, among many others. She served as president of Fox 2000 Pictures, was the first woman to solo executive produce the Academy Awards. In addition to her work with Stand Up to Cancer, Ziskin was actively involved in issues that concern the environment, health, and families as a board member of Americans for a Safe Future, National Council of Jewish Women, and Education First. I know she inspired me and countless others through her feisty, friendly, and determined personality and her compassionate activism. And indeed, earlier this year, Ziskin was awarded the Producers Guild of America's Visionary Award for her work not only as a film producer, but for her humanitarian efforts in the fight against cancer. She is survived by her husband, screenwriter Alvin Sargent, with whom she frequently collaborated, her daughter, producer Julia Berry, and her son-in-law, writer Ellie Danskiewicz, and her family request that donations be made to Stand Up to Cancer, which can be found on the internet at su2c.org.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Labonge.
Sylvia Quentin Delagrotto, great man, lived to be 92 years old, born in New York, migrated here, was a colonel in the Army Reserves, mortgage banker, great family man, great parishioner from St. Francis of Assisi Church in Silver Lake, lived on the corner, would pass his house, was our Little League coach in the 1960s at Hollywood, Leaven Grove Park. In fact, on Saturday, I went to the park, represented Mr. Garcetti because he was on Navy duty, as they dedicated a new park and spoke of him, because he was our Little League coach. After the games, we'd all get in the car, we'd go to Dario's down in Little Italy, which was Chinatown on Ord Street, and he'd buy us all sandwiches. He was a wonderful man. He played minor league baseball for the Cardinals. It was a beautiful service for him, but is survived by his wife, Mary, and his son, John, his daughter-in-law, Mary, as well as his two grandson. But Coach Delagrotto was the greatness of what Los Angeles is all about, a good man, good man for his community. God rest his soul, we met for Coach Delagrotto.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Dr. Herschel Swinger, who was a renowned clinical psychologist for more than 30 years, a member of the executive leadership of the Children's Institute, 105-year-old children's service organization in Los Angeles. The agency is dedicated to helping children traumatized by family and community violence and abuse and neglect. He was also a professor of counselor education for Cal State University of Los Angeles, where he taught and mentored hundreds of students each year and retained an ongoing professorship. A life of accomplishment gave him many other titles, child advocate, community national leader, loving father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and loyal friend. He passed away on May 23rd, 2011. He was acutely aware that the world is not as it should be. Too many children and families are poor, discriminated against, abandoned, and abused. He took the reality very seriously. His life's mission was to make the world more like it should be and inspire us daily to join him in this effort. At the Children's Institute, Dr. Swinger was a creative force behind several national demonstration programs and innovative treatment models. He also strove to repair and strengthen the connection and did so by developing a nationally-recognized program that is now replicated throughout LA County and beyond. It's fitting that he was a father figure to so many. He worked as a counselor and a psychologist, also led service in the LA County Sheriff's Department, the LA County Adoption and Dependency Courts. As an expert in child abuse prevention, he serves as director of the Southern California Child Abuse Prevention Center at Cal State LA, and as Region 9 Director of the Center of Child Abuse and Neglect. He received hundreds of awards for his significant contribution. He is survived by his daughter, Robin, and his son, Herschel Jr., and a host of family members.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Reyes.
I was going to read the same one for Council President Garcetti, so maybe we can second that.
Okay. That'd be the second. Okay, that concludes then. For point of clarification, item 21 will be back on July 15th as a return date, and that concludes today's meeting. The next meeting, the Los Angeles City Council, will take place in John F. R. Chambers at 10:00 AM tomorrow, Wednesday, June 15th. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.